I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 18th, City Council Regular Meeting and invite everyone that would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, we are going to do audience comments and this will be your opportunity to talk to your city council. The guidelines for public participation are displayed on the screen behind the city council. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Those who signed up on the sign up list to speak will be called first and then I'll give a couple of opportunities for anyone who did not have a chance to sign up to come up and speak as well. Speaker's podium is to my right. If you are here as part of a group, as a spokesperson or representing a group, can you identify that in your comments? And if you are here this evening and hearing a speaker, make a point that you strongly support or you support, please raise your hand so council has an indication of your thoughts on the matter. There are also going to be two public hearings tonight. AB 7757, the 2020 levy and revenue sources, and AB 7758, the proposed 2020 budget including salary ordinances. If you want to speak directly to one of those topics, please stay for the regular portion of our meeting and you'll be able to make comments on those specifically. Also, I want to add some additional information about an ongoing CEPA appeal. As many of you know, the Providence Point Umbrella Association has filed an appeal of the State Environmental Policy Act, determination of nonsignificance that was issued by city staff for the comprehensive plan redesignation and rezone request related to the Issaquah School District property. Because this appeal is quasi judicial and will be heard by the Issaquah City Council on December 2nd, 2019, the city council may not hear audience comments tonight on any of the issues raised in the CEPA appeal. And if you are not sure and you are up speaking, our city council, legal council, will advise you, advise me and let me know that the comment, I may have to stop you in your comments if they are in contradiction to what I just stated. So for the city clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Ann Fletcher. My name is Ann Fletcher and I'm a resident at 255 Southeast Andrews Street in Issaquah. I'm speaking as a member of the People for Climate Action in Issaquah. And we urge the city council tonight to approve the resolution for clean fuel standards. And we remind individuals that they can also send their own comments to the Clean Energy Agency as well. Clean fuel standards are an important piece of the puzzle to reducing carbon emissions. And many other pieces are needed in building codes and land use, waste management, natural space preservation, et cetera, to create the impact needed to turn the climate crisis around. People for Climate Action was formed to support the city in creating a robust plan to have that kind of impact. We applaud all the efforts towards those ends so far taken by the city council and the sustainability department. The council has the power to do even more to reach Issaquah's comprehensive plan goal of achieving or advancing us toward a carbon neutral community and our K4C agreement to reduce our carbon emissions 50% by 2030. The city's comment letter to the Puget Sound Clean Energy Agency requests the agency take care in what the city calls an aggressive timeline for implementation of the fuel standards. Their reason is that the standards would require a potentially high cost for the necessary technology and production. While this concern may be prudent in short-term economics, there is also an equally crucial concern if we do not prioritize limited budgets to make rapid enough changes, rapid enough to sustain the health of our natural environment and avert the potentially higher costs of longer-term negative social and economic consequences. So, People for Climate Action will be here to remind the city that there are times when it is prudent to be bold. And we are here to listen, to learn, and assist with ideas from other successful cities and with the King County-funded city toolkit. We are here to collaborate with the city so Issaquah can do its part. And we are here to communicate positively with our residents about how we can all work together for a sustainable and high-quality way of life for everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And there are a lot of hands up in the air. Has anyone else signed up this evening, Tisha? Yes, Larry Franks. Come on up, Larry.
My name is Larry Franks. I live at 24001 Southeast 103rd Street, Issaquah. And I am also supporting the People for Climate Action. My message is short. I'm thanking you in advance for supporting the clean fuel standard. My fish thank you. More than that, my grandchildren thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Hands in the air. Tisha? No one further has signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening during audience comments? Come on up, Mr. Kapler.
Good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. You heard that address already tonight. And she speaks much more directly and on point than I do, but anyway. In 1992, we had an air quality and atmospheric task force that the city sponsored. We had citizens, staff, and two council members, myself being one of those. We couldn't call it climate change in those days, or even greenhouse gases were mentioned in the report, but you couldn't have it on the cover. So it had to be air quality and atmospheric task force. One of the atmospheric issues was actually the high-level ozone, which we ended up, as a world, taking on and pretty much solving that issue. So, climate change got some other issues. From the summary, we had some things which sound, I think, familiar to what we've been doing: reduced lighting and heating, conversion to energy-conserving streetlights, increased tree planting around city facilities, purchase land to preserve open space in parks. Got to do more on that. We did some great ones lately. Protect future water supply options: Cascade Water Alliance, consider future climate and selecting tree species, acquire potential future habitat areas and open space, consider changes in transportation plans and policies to encourage public transportation, adopt stricter tree preservation standards, develop a tree fund, consider utility rate modifications to promote conservation. Another one: lobby metro for increased bus and shuttle service on the East Side. And at that time, metro was actually cutting back East Side transportation. Develop a recognition program for developments which preserve a substantial tree cover. Issaquah Highlands and Talis both got lots of city recognition. Encourage private efforts to preserve open space, thinking about Tibbetts, the Tibbetts restoration that was happened on the Raleigh property as an example. Lobby and support of DNR's community and urban forest legislation to provide technical support. Thanks for staff. Got this actually scanned, so I'm going to be able to send you that to see what we were thinking in November of 1992. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapler. That's a hands in the air. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? The second call, and a third and final call if anyone would like to address their city council. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to committee and regional reports and we'll start with Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I attended the East Side Transportation Partnership meeting where we talked about the active transportation plan that King County is releasing. And so, they discussed, you know, active transportation is anything that requires your body moving, so walking, biking, even wheelchair movement, anything that's not in a vehicle. And they said the draft plan update will be available in February with a final in April. And we also talked about the airport capacity study, but that has less relevance, I would say, directly to Issaquah, so I'll leave that off. Also, just as a side note, I did get a chance to visit the Open Window School and they have sent some amazing thank you notes. I will send that around, good of the order for everyone to see. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier today, November 18th, the Cascade Water Alliance Board had a workshop to discuss strategic planning and I attended as well as Mayor Polly. And we discussed the mission and vision of Cascade Water, big picture, as well as strategies for achieving that. And as a reminder, for all of us, Cascade's mission is to provide water supply to meet current and future needs of our members in a cost-effective and environmentally responsible manner through partnerships, water efficiency programs, acquiring, constructing, and managing water supply infrastructure, and fostering regional water planning. So we discussed how we can achieve that mission. The next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board will be later this week on November 20th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. On the first Thursday of the month, I attended the Growth Management Policy Board meeting at PSRC headquarters in Seattle. The only agenda item was deliberations on amendments to the draft Vision 2050 Plan. And let me tell you, very lively deliberations. And there is quite a lot of cohesiveness among most people. And however, there are still over 20 amendments for the board to consider. So they are going to meet again this week on Thursday and then again in December, which is not usual for this group. Part of the reason for that is that eight of the roughly 30 board members are not going to be there next year. So they want to get this work done, and that's just so that we can make a recommendation of the final set of policies and actions to the PSRC Executive Board, hopefully targeting a springtime 2020 for a final, final adoption. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Ray and I attended the East Side Fire and Rescue Board of Directors meeting on November 14th. And most notably, I'm happy to report that East Side Fire and Fire District 10 received clean financial audits for years 2016 through 2018. Those are the most notable items from the agenda. And also that their East Side Fire has a new finance and administrative director, Lisa King, so we welcomed her. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Patyce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. South Cities Association met on Wednesday, November 13th. I struggled with how to explain, there was a, about 70% of the entire meeting was devoted to the issue of the various homelessness plans that are circulating in the county right now. And if I distill it down, what I would say is basically in the 48 hours ahead of that meeting, we received two modified plans. One from County Councilmember Cole Wells and the other from County Councilmember Dimbowski. And this was, remember, this was just last Wednesday afternoon. SCA has not finished evaluating those two plans. And the strong will of the body that night was to not take a position on either plan, but rather to approve a general statement of principles around homelessness. And I'll just read the high level briefly. "SCA recognizes that homelessness is a regional crisis. Subregional planning is key to the success of a region-wide effort. Cities must be involved in the development of a regional action plan and five-year plan. SCA members have significant questions about the value of forming a new government, a PDA, to tackle the challenges of a fractured system. There needs to be high-level agreement among policymakers across the county on the objectives for a new entity before the entity is formed. If a new government structure is established, policymakers, elected officials, should set policy. And finally, that any board committee of elected officials should have equitable distribution of power between King County, Seattle, and SCA cities." So what SCA is doing right now is it is evaluating the Cole Wells and the Dimbowski proposals as regards to the principles that SCA has approved in how to address homelessness in the county. I will forward on to council as those, as more substantive responses come back on these proposals, I will forward them to your perusal in the hope that in our council meeting in two weeks, we could, for good of the order, when also hopefully the council meeting is a little bit shorter than tonight's meeting, review that feedback from SCA and that you can all give me a consensus view from this body as to our response to the plans that are in front of us. But we're just, even if this wasn't a four-hour meeting this evening, those plans have not yet been evaluated to an extent that I think we could have an intelligent conversation this evening. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Mertz. Fingers crossed we're less than four hours, but we'll see how we do. Onto the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. The item is expected to last 20 minutes and no action is anticipated to follow an open session. Old Town Traffic Calming. Following public testimony during the city council's November 4th meeting concerning Old Town Traffic Calming Measures and Safety, we've posted a recap of questions and concerns along with more information and answers that can be provided expeditiously. Those that either attended the meeting or are watching at home can learn more about this at issaquahwa.gov/oldtowntraffict calming, old with an E on the end of it. As the city conducts a more thorough review of the issues raised, a presentation and further recommendations will be made at a city council study session in early 2020. You can sign up for old town updates at issaquahwa.gov/notifyme. Southeast 43rd Signalization Project. Included on tonight's consent agenda is legislation authorizing an interfund loan from the sewer fund to the capital fund to allow work to begin on the Southeast 43rd Signalization Project. The interfund loan will serve as bridge funding to allow work on the project to commence prior to the city issuing bonds in mid-2020. The 2020 budget that council is scheduled to adopt later this evening does include 7.6 million in funding for this project. The Southeast 43rd Signalization Project will realign the driveways to Providence Point and Forest Village and install a traffic signal at the new intersection. It will also connect sidewalk from Providence Point West to the existing sidewalk in front of Providence Ridge. It will construct facilities to detain and treat stormwater. It will relocate utilities for PSE, wave, and Sumamish Plateau water. And finally, an overlay for the pavement along Southeast 43rd to repair the deteriorated pavement. This project will advertise for bids in late fall 2019 and construction is expected to begin in late winter, early spring 2020. The traffic signal and realigned driveway are expected to open in fall 2020. And that concludes the mayor's report. Moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Yes. Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Would someone care to make a motion?
I am sorry about that. I move we adopt the consent calendar as listed in tonight's meeting agenda.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. We're going to move on to the public hearings portion of our meeting. And before we begin, I'd like to clarify the process for both hearings. First, there will be a staff presentation followed by council questions. I'll then reopen the hearings and the public can make comments at that time. After receiving comments, I'll proceed to close the hearings. Council deliberation and action on both public hearing items will occur later on the agenda this evening under regular business. Up first is AB 7757, 2020 Levy and Revenue Sources. A public hearing was conducted at the October 21st and November 4th council meetings and was continued to tonight's meeting. And Finance Director Beth Goldberg is already up there for a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We are hopefully on the last evening with, at risk of jinxing this, of budget deliberations for 2020. Hopefully, we made it. Going to give a brief overview of the property tax and other revenues. As a reminder, we're required under state law to hold a public hearing about property tax and other revenues. The public hearing was opened on October 21st and the council decided to continue it November 4th. We had another public hearing on November 4th, continued it again to this evening. So tonight continues the public hearing that was opened on October 21st. After discussion and public comment tonight, council does need to close the public hearing. And then, as Mayor Polly indicated, during regular business, council will have an opportunity to vote on the property tax ordinance. As a reminder, the property tax is proposed or is currently configured. We've made some changes since the proposed budget that I'll go into. Totals an estimated $9.6 million for 2020, which represents about 19% of the general fund budget. The pie chart here does represent, this is the first time, I believe you're all seeing this pie chart. This represents the updated revenue figures based on the direction we received from council during budget deliberations. And the revenues are a little bit lower than what we had discussed originally. We're now at $49.65 million. In terms of what we are recommending for the property tax levy for 2020, we are recommending 1%, taking the 1% increase plus new construction and banked capacity. Collectively, that will generate 9. almost $6 million for the city, 9.12 from the base levy, $91,000 from the 1% increase, $169,000 for new construction, $9,000 for re-leaving for prior year refunds, and then $160, almost $8,000 for banked capacity. As we have discussed in the past, bank capacity would add roughly $12 to the average Issaquah resident property tax bill. And the average estimated property tax bill for 2020, the Issaquah portion would be $697, which is up from $646 in 2019. Also, as we have discussed throughout budget, our budget discussions this fall, the levy rate is actually dropping because of increases in assessed value. So the rate per thousand that people are paying is lower than what it has been traditionally, but the amount paid to the city is up slightly. The 2020 budget also includes some other revenue actions and increase in the utility tax rates. Last, final budget deliberations from the council directed the administration to prepare an ordinance that would raise utility tax by 2%, 3% rather than the originally proposed 6%. We've talked about some changes in parks fees as well as cemetery fees. And there are, again, separate actions that council will ask to take on each of these ordinances during regular business. And with that, that completes my overview.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. I'll see if council has any questions on the information. Councilmember Winterstein?
If it's easy, Beth, I really would appreciate, you know, you talked a little bit about the bank capacity and we know the dollar amount that we're looking at has, reflects some adjustments, something about maybe not using refunds or accounting for them correctly. Could you just give a quick overview of that?
Yes. So each year, the council makes a decision of a levy rate. And within that levy rate is, it's based 1% above the prior year's property tax amount. As King County, which assesses the property tax on our behalf, is making those assessments to individual property owners, there are opportunities for people to come back for refunds and disputing what the King County Assessor's Office is assessing as their property tax bill. What, I think what you're getting at with your question, Councilmember Winterstein, is that in the past, we have had banked capacity, but the city has not, in recent years, backed out those refunds from the base rate. So we have been slowly eating into banked capacity by not backing out those refunds. Is that...
Yeah, yeah, it did. I couldn't see where the refund is. So we, based upon what legislation was set, there was a dollar amount. But because we got refunds, we should have taken that out of that.
Out of the base, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. The guidelines for citizen comments for the public hearing portion are similar as to what we had up before. And just a reminder, if you're here as a group, please make sure you identify that. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:37 and ask the city clerk if anyone has signed up to speak.
No.
Is there anyone who would like to address council during this public hearing? Second request. Anybody wishing to address their council? A third request. Still seeing no hands. We'll close the public hearing at 7:38. And as stated earlier, there was no council action. At this point in time, you'll be taking action later on in the regular meeting. Moving on to the next public hearing, AB 7758, Proposed 2020 Budget Including Salary Ordinances. Again, we are conducting a public hearing on this ordinance. I presented the proposed 2020 budget on September 24th. And since that time, council has held six budget study sessions and deliberated changes to the proposed budget. A public hearing on the proposed budget was held on October 21st and tonight, the final public hearing will be conducted. And Beth, is there a brief presentation that you have?
There is another brief presentation. I'll try and be just as brief or maybe even more brief than the last one. So again, how we got here is Mayor Polly indicated, she transmitted her proposed budget on September 24th. Since then, we have had a number of presentations from staff to council, some budget deliberation sessions concluding last, or November 6th, I guess it was two weeks ago, with final direction from the council about what to include in the package that is before you this evening. So that is how we got to where we are tonight. As a reminder, when we began discussions with the council over the proposed budget, we did pose a series of policy questions related to the way the budget was constructed. And those policy questions guided council discussions throughout this process. I won't read through them all here, but they are on the screen for you to review. As council deliberated those questions, they, council gave us direction to make a number of changes to the proposed budget. The details of all of those changes are included in your packet. But I did want to highlight what I think we would all agree on are the significant changes so that there is an awareness. The first of which is the council asked the administration to come back with a lower utility tax rate proposal. So what is before you tonight is a 3% increase to the utility tax on water, sewer, stormwater, and cable as opposed to the 6% that was originally proposed. We've also got included in the package for you tonight, a lower increase on the senior gold pass fee, lowering the increase from $120 per year to $60 per year for residents, and then a similar differential for non-residents. We've got restored funding to maintain community center and swimming pool hours at 2019 hours of operations. The package before you tonight also restores funding for community grants and contracts for services. It adds funds to support integration of strategic plan environmental objectives into the work on Title 19 and does make a modest draw on fund balance to support the work of the citywide services assessment. That's a one-time function that will draw on fund balance to partially offset those costs. costs. So that's the highlighted changes. Again, there are more detailed changes in your packet. The overall budget with these changes, these are all funds totals $143.1 million, of which the general fund represents $49.8 million. This is down slightly from the proposed budget. In terms of the general fund, as I mentioned, $49.8 million, 40% of the budget goes to public safety and law enforcement functions, is the biggest portion. And then the next largest portion is parks, and then the different service areas go down from there. So that's the overview of the general fund budget. In terms of fund balance, we spent quite a bit of time talking about fund balance throughout the deliberations. Based on the direction we received from the council on November 6th, we project an ending fund balance for 2020 of $13.5 million, which represents 27% of expenditures. And then later this evening, council will be asked to take action on the various pieces that make up the 2020 budget, including the utility tax rate, which I've mentioned previously, the property tax levy, also mentioned previously this evening, parks and recreations fees, cemetery fees, and then last, the salary ordinance, and finally, the annual budget. And all of those will be before council as separate action items under regular business. And with that, I'm done with my remarks.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. Does council have any questions on the presentation? Seeing none. Guidelines are the same as the previous two opportunities to comment, so I will open the public hearing at 7:33 and ask if anybody has signed up to speak.
Yes. Rachel Krynski?
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for your service and for the obvious considerable work you've put into creating a budget in a challenging times, given the revenue constraints you were dealing with. My name is Rachel Krynski. I'm the executive director at Lifewire, which is based at a confidential address in Bellevue, and as you know, we also serve Isaguac residents. But I'm here tonight wearing my hat as the co-chair of the King County Alliance for Human Services and a member of the Eastside Advocacy Team, which is a subgroup of that group. King County Alliance member organizations provide essential services to residents across the county, including many of your residents in Isaguac. And our goal is to increase local investment in community health and human services by cities across King County as well as by the county itself. This council increased Isaguac's human services investment by $129,000 in the last budget cycle, and we were very grateful for that. Brought you to a total of $495,000 for human services grants. And if I understand everything that I've been trying to follow, you just restored yourselves back to that state, which is terrific. I'm really happy to see that come back in. We can confirm that that investment has had positive impacts on the well-being of residents of Isaguac. However, as you know, the Human Services Commission received $1.1 million in requests that you were only able to fund less than 50% of. Isaguac, with that bump back, currently invests just under 1% of the general fund into human services, and we have been talking with Eastside cities about wanting to urge all Eastside cities to get to 2% of the general fund to fund human services by the end of the 2021-22 biennium. So we urge you to keep moving in steps towards that, to deepen and sustain the funding, to take action in any ways that you can. I know that you are in the final moments of this budget. I would urge you to see if there's any increase you can make in this year's budget to move towards higher rates for the next biennium. But we also recognize the challenging fiscal situation before you, and we're trying to balance our recognition of that with our recognition of the significant unmet needs that have been identified by your Human Services Commission and the recommendations from your Community Needs Assessment. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your commitment to human services, and I just want to share our perspective that when you look at infrastructure needs, we think human beings are the most important infrastructure in any community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you, and there's hands in the air. Thank you also for the letter that the council and I received last week, I think, as well. I just want to ask a clarifying question. Was there a restoration of human services grant funds?
Yes.
From which amount to?
To, it was, I believe, almost $70,000, and it restores it to the 2019 levels. Yes, just under $70,000. Thank you.
Has anyone else signed up this evening to speak? No. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Come on up to the podium.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dave Osmer. I live at 22433 Southeast Highland Lane, and that's in Providence Point, and I'm just here to thank you and commend the council for finally getting us a stoplight.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council during this public hearing? The second call, anyone wishing to address council? And a final, third and final call. And seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing at 7:37. And there is no action right now because council deliberation and action on this ordinance will occur under regular business as well. So we're moving into the regular business portion of our meeting, and we're starting first with AB 7831, the 2020 legislative agenda. This item was heard by council at the October 22nd council study session, and Jean Paul, our management analyst, is at the lectern to give a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Jean Paul, management analyst in the mayor's office, and I'm here tonight to present on the 2020 state legislative agenda. There are two primary reasons for the presentation. First, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the legislative agenda's development, and the second reason is to request council action to approve the agenda. At the October 22nd study session, the city's lobbyist Shelley Helder and I gave an initial presentation on the legislative agenda. This included a general overview of the upcoming legislative session, the city's legislative successes in the 2019 session, and the proposed 2020 agenda. As a reminder, we have three overall priorities for the 2020 legislative agenda. Two of these priorities fall under a potential transportation funding package. The first is a request to provide the funding needed to finish widening State Route 18 from Isquahobart Road to Raging River. The second request is $3 million to begin the pre-design and environmental documentation process for an additional under-over crossing of I-90. The third priority is about providing tools for the city to sustainably fund transportation and basic services. Three priorities received positive feedback at the October 22nd study session, and there have been no changes to the document. However, I do want to highlight an additional request. As part of the council action tonight, the administration is seeking approval to participate in the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition, or CLTC. This participation would include the placement of the city's logo on that group's legislative agenda. This year, the communities of North Bend and Snoqualmie have already joined in Maple Valley, Covington, and Black Diamond to advocate for the completion of State Route 18. The administration would like council approval to participate in this effort. The policy manual is the second half of the legislative agenda. This is the document that details the city's positions for the full spectrum of issues that may arise during the legislative session. The version presented at the study session had revisions for issues resolved during the 2019 session and the addition of positions for issues expected to emerge during the upcoming session. Some of the positions added prior to the October 22nd study session include support for the multifamily property tax exemption, support for a clean fuel standard, support for a comprehensive plan to address fish blocking culverts, and opposition to statewide approaches to land use decisions that we believe should be local decisions. There have been two changes to the policy manual since the study session. The first is the addition of a statement based on council's direction that monitors the recent changes to the Landlord-Tenant Act. The second change, which is also described in greater detail in the agenda bill, is to monitor the development of medication-assisted treatment in local jails to ensure both resources are provided and logistical challenges are addressed. All of the changes to this document have been highlighted in a separate attachment to the agenda bill. In terms of next steps, we are requesting council action this evening. The next event for the legislative agenda after approval is the Legislative Breakfast, which is scheduled for December 9th, and this will be an opportunity for a meeting with our state legislators and a discussion about our priorities before the 2020 session. The session itself starts on January 13, 2020, and the AWC is holding its City Action Days in Olympia on January 28 and 29. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jean. Does council have any questions? Councilmember Ray?
So with the likely passage of Initiative 976 and the $30 car tab, does that in any way change our priorities for the legislative agenda from your perspective? And is that something we should consider?
It doesn't from my perspective, and in conversations with our lobbyists, it probably increases the likelihood that a transportation package will at least start coming together during this session. It likely still won't be something they would vote on until probably the 2021 session at the earliest, but just knowing now that there's a greater need for resources than before, it increases the likelihood for a transportation package to start coming together, and we would want those projects to be part of that conversation.
So just following up, that sounds a little counterintuitive to me, that with less money, there'd be more impetus for a transportation package. Can you kind of explain how that, what?
Yes, with Initiative 976, there would be less resources, but it would also force the legislature to really take a step back and decide if there are additional tools out there they would like to use outside of vehicle license fees to fund transportation. And in the effort that they would start looking at additional resources outside of vehicle license fees, it would start that conversation of what projects then would they need to fund and what kind of resources they would need to find to do that.
Thanks.
Additional questions? Would someone care to make a motion? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Hunt.
I have a point of discussion, actually. So I had asked a question of Jean yesterday about the fish culvert statement. There is a statement under Environment, Natural Resources that Isaguac supports a watershed-based strategic plan to address local fish blocking culverts along with state culverts. So I asked about that because there are many watershed-based strategic plans, and there are many strategic plans around addressing both salmon recovery as well as fish recovery. And so I wondered if that was a reference to a specific plan or if it was a reference to creating a plan that doesn't yet exist. So I received back some information that that item is from the Association of Washington Cities, and it's not a specific plan, but it is more of an approach to addressing these fish blocking culverts. And in the statement from Association of Washington Cities, they also say a statewide approach is the only way to achieve meaningful salmon and orca recovery, which I think is more explaining why this item is there in the broader context of this item. So I would like to propose, and because salmon are so dear to our city and our residents, I would like to propose that we add a bullet about supporting statewide efforts to achieve meaningful salmon and orca recovery through funding of strategic action, including habitat conservation and funding. Also because this is about culverts, but it's, we need the culverts to get to habitat.
Yes. So I'm going to get you to hold that thought, and when we have a motion and a second, I'd like you to present that as an option for discussion, maybe in the form of an amendment. Okay. Council President Mertz?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the 2019-2020 legislative agenda as presented and disquest participation in the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion or entertaining an amendment to the document? Councilmember Hunt?
So I think generally the priorities, especially the high-level priorities, are good, and I really appreciate all of the information that we've been provided about the legislative agenda. I would like to make this small amendment, which is to move to add a last bullet under Environment, Natural Resources, which is Isaguac supports statewide efforts to achieve meaningful salmon and orca recovery through funding of strategic action, including habitat conservation and funding.
Can I get you to pass that around? I'm going to have to reread it at some point.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to amend the language in the legislative agenda and to add this bullet. Discussion. And you may start if you want, but you have expressed why you wanted to do it. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add, Vicky?
I'll just add one more thing, which is this also aligns well with our RIAA8 Salmon Recovery Council efforts, and Isaguac is a member of the Salmon Recovery Council for RIAA8, which is our watershed, and we talk a lot about the importance of statewide action to support salmon recovery.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Sounds like it. So the amendment is moved to add a last bullet under the Environmental, Natural Resources section. Isaguac supports statewide efforts to achieve meaningful salmon orca recovery through funding of strategic action, including habitat conservation and funding. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Back to the main motion. Is there any other information, any other discussion that you would like to have on the main motion? Not seeing anything. I'll call for a vote. The motion is to approve the 2019-2020 legislative agenda as presented and as amended, and disquest participation in the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is AB 7869, consideration to support a regional clean fuel standard. The request is to approve a resolution and provide direction to the administration. Council did receive an informal presentation on this topic at the October 7th council meeting and requested the opportunity to formally support the standard. So I'm asking Sustainability Director David Fujimoto to come up and make a small, brief
Good evening, council members. David Fujimoto, Sustainability Director. I'm here to give a brief overview of the resolution and a comment letter that's before you regarding a regional clean fuel standard. You might recall that earlier this fall, council received a presentation from Craig Kenworthy, who is the executive director of the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, about this particular rule, and that occurred before the rule was released, so there's some information out. The rule is currently under a comment period, which extends through January the 6th, and so they're receiving comments from a variety of folks at this point in time. The presentation today will include a short overview of the clean fuel standard, describe the resolution in the accompanying letter. I'll talk a little bit about connection to the city's climate goals and policies and how those things match, and I'd happy to take questions along the way. And also, I understand that the presentation was inadvertently excluded from the packet. I think that was updated, but I apologize for that, that happened, so.
So it is available online right now?
It is available online.
Thank you.
So briefly, a little bit about regional and local transportation emissions. As I think you heard before, the transportation sector is a critical element when considering greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution. In the Puget Sound region, we consume about 1 billion gallons of gasoline and 220 million gallons of diesel fuel annually. From past carbon inventories, we know that transportation-related greenhouse gas emissions in Isaguac represents about 33% of community-wide emissions, and for the region, it's about 40% for the Puget Sound area as a whole. Passenger vehicles comprise the largest share of transportation-related emissions at about 74%, followed by freight and service vehicles, which are about 14%. Pictured here on the presentation is some information from the Department of Health Washington Tracking Network, and this is an online portal containing data from a variety of environmental monitoring sources. And this particular data set is showing diesel and particulate matter pollution, and they rank these by deciles, and it's showing a few of the region around Isaguac, and there is some high proximity to busy transportation corridors, which relates to, in this case, nitrogen oxides. And you can see that there's a couple of census tracts which rate in the eighth decile as well as the seventh and the sixth. So there is some relevancy to Isaguac in terms of air pollution. The clean fuel standard, and regarding the clean fuel standard, back in 2018, the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency commissioned a report on actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector, and they identified that a clean fuel standard has the largest potential impact on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It also, in their mind, felt had a high certainty of success and a high certainty of pollution reduction. It also has some related air quality benefits. It has the benefit of being technology and fuel neutral because of the approach, and it also uses a performance-based standard to achieve results. And it also uses a performance-based standard to achieve results, which means that it doesn't pick winners or losers by its very nature. It's kind of neutral in that respect. And then also builds upon and utilizes frameworks that were established by other states on the West Coast. So Washington is the only state on the West Coast without a Clean Fuel Standard. British Columbia, as well as California and Oregon, also have Clean Fuel Standards in So how does the Clean Fuel Standard work? As I mentioned before, it utilizes a market-based approach to reduce the carbon intensity or the carbon value, if you will, of fuel, transportation-related fuels. That's a measure of greenhouse gas emissions over, for a fuel, over the life cycle of that fuel, all the way from extraction to combustion and end-use. Under a Clean Fuel Standard, the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency takes on a regulatory role and a consolidating role of data, providing technical resources and cataloging carbon fuel intensity. And then they enforce compliance with the standard. The standard is set and changes over time. They've proposed a reduction of 25% in the carbon intensity by 2030. It's designed in such a way that the carbon intensity standard is lower in the earlier years and higher in later years. And the goal with that is to provide for kind of ramping into the program. So the idea is that if you're generating pollution above the standard, then you generate deficits. If you're generating below the standard, you generate credits. So there's an opportunity early on to generate and bank credits, which can be used later on through the program. So in that way, it provides for some opportunities for innovation, and it also allows for existing producers some time to start to transition away from higher-carbon fuels as well. And then it also incentivizes cleaner fuels along the way, such as electricity, natural gas, renewable natural gas, biodiesel, and things like that. The Puget Sound Clean Air Agency also commissioned a study from a consulting firm, ICF. ICF conducted a fuels analysis, and here are a few of the key findings that they had identified. They noted that in the Puget Sound region that there's significant capacity for low-carbon fuels. These are both kind of existing capacity as well as a new capacity that's coming online. There's a significant refining capacity coming online in Grace-Harbor County, for example, that could supply the region. But there is also current capacity for biofuels that's blended into existing fuels. They've also identified that a good portion, or 10 to 16%, of carbon intensity reductions are possible in the near term with modest or minimal investments. And they have also identified the maximum achievable reductions at 26% in 2030. They did note that there is a range of investments that will be needed over time, both from, all the way from refining, transmission, distribution, and end uses through vehicles. So there's significant investment and change that needs to occur. And they also modeled the economic impacts of the proposed rule over time. And they identified that those are, in aggregate, are very small, less than 0.1% over the timeframe that they studied. And that was on top, looking at a 12% growth during that same timeframe. And then finally, they had identified that the air quality implications are positive in terms of the pollution reduction potential as a result of the Clean Fuel Standard. So as you know, as we note, the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency is an agency which covers a four-county area, Kings, Homage, Pierce, and Kitsap counties. The proposed rule would only apply to that area. It is an area that's about, has a population of about 4.1 persons, which is remarkably close to the population of Oregon, which I think is about 4.19 million. So very, it's a small kind of geographic area, but it does encompass a significant population. But they have noted that their preference would be to adopt this at the statewide level. And as you know, with the state legislative agenda, which was just discussed, but also this earlier this year as a part of the 2019 legislative process, there was an agenda, or there was a House bill that was brought forward. It did pass through the House, but did not proceed through the Senate. And so there is that consideration. It's anticipated that that's going to come forward in the future as well. So there is another opportunity to take a look at that as well. One of the elements that we wanted to make note of was this issue about timing. We, you'll note on the table that there, as I noted before, there are Clean Fuel Standards across the Western Coast. Each of them have different start times and different targets. The House bill that was before the legislature in the last legislative session called for a 10% reduction by 2028 and ultimately a 20% reduction by 2035. At that point in time, it was, in terms of overall timing, was the most aggressive of the different fuel standards. California is well ahead of both Oregon and potentially Washington. They had initially targeted a 10% reduction, but increased that to a 20% reduction, basically over a 25-year timeframe, or excuse me, 20-year timeframe. So 20% over 20 years from 2010 to 2030. Oregon started in 2015 and has been targeting a 10% reduction by 2025, so a 10% reduction over 10 years. The House bill 101110 had been targeting a 20% reduction over approximately 15 years. And then the Clean Air Authority was, in terms of the overall target reduction, was aiming for a 25% reduction, but over an even shorter timeframe, which was 10 years. So we believe that's important to, or they've stated that's important to be pursuing an aggressive goal. And their studies have also identified that the potential was for a 26% reduction over that time. So they've identified that it's feasible. They note that it's aggressive in terms of the changes made. One of the considerations is how that might impact the adoption of various technologies related to the Carbon Fuel Standard. So quickly, in terms of policy linkages, the city does, as you know, have greenhouse gas emission goals, which are adopted in our comprehensive plan. We also similarly have some goals which speak to the need for regional and statewide collaboration. Climate, as you know, cannot be solved at the local level or even the regional level. It requires a lot of collaboration and actions at multiple levels. We also have a variety of transportation-related policies that speak directly to alternative fuel vehicles, multimodal transportation, looking at the benefits of lower-carbon travel and negative effects on the climate and human health. We are also founding members of the King County City's Climate Collaboration, which includes the Low Carbon Fuel Standard as a, quote, "catalytic" policy investment. And so that's been identified there as well. And then we just spoke just previously about the legislative agenda. So a bit about the resolution, the comment letter. There's two pieces that are provided for your consideration. You also could choose to adopt one or both of these. The resolution is a statement which articulates the support for the Clean Fuel Standard as a clear interest on the part of the city. It references some of the community climate values, some of our goals and objectives, some of which I just mentioned, and the importance of mitigation and adaptation. The comment letter similarly also talks about alignment with the city goals, but makes note of this potential concern about timing. And it's, the reason I say it's a potential concern or a consideration, it's within the study that the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency put forth, there was not, they didn't fully consider the technology changes and considerations that might be required relative to the other states that have carbon fuel standards within that timeframe. And so it's really more of a question and a consideration to the Clean Air Agency to consider whether that might need to be a mitigating factor or if it's addressed in other means. So it's not providing any recommendations, but just a request for consideration. Going forward, next steps. Coming up in December, the Clean Air Agency will be holding a public hearing on the Clean Fuel Standards. The comment period closes in early January. And then following consideration of those comments, the Clean Air Agency expects to take up the issue before the Board of Directors and issue a decision in early 2000. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, David. Any questions for Director Fujimoto? Counselor member Hunt.
On the timing issue, when you're saying the technology, the timing issue and adoption of the technology versus the other states, so is the concern that California also is trying to adopt, or California is also adopting this, will be having more cleaner technologies, and so that will affect the marketplace and that will affect the ability of other states to also address the technology needs?
I think it's a question, really. So one of the key factors in order to meet that, the most aggressive timeline, which is which the Clean Air Agency is proposing, which is the 25% reduction in 10 years, a big part of that change is the transformation and fuel switching to electric vehicles, renewable natural gas, and fuel cell vehicles. And the California marketplace has a significant driver on the overall vehicle marketplace. And this is both light-duty as well as heavy-duty and medium-duty vehicles as well. And so that is a consideration, is if we are ahead of that curve relative to California, is that create an uncertainty or is that addressed in other means because of adoption rates in this, in this area or other factors? And I think that was just not fully clear in the study, and it's a point where they could provide some additional, shed some additional light.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Counsel president Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2019 dash...
16.
Supporting adoption of a Clean Fuel Standard and direct the administration to transmit a comment letter to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counsel president Mertz.
So I believe that the evidence is clear that anthropogenic climate change is the largest threat facing the human race after global thermonuclear war. And you don't have to be a fancy scientist to see it. The United States has kept painstaking climate and weather data for the last, in the case of the airport, for about the last 50 years. You can go back. I've looked at the numbers. You can put them in Excel. You can see the trend line over the last 50 years as the climate's been warming up. You don't have to, you don't have to be a rocket scientist, although I am. So I very much support this, this effort. Yes, we are one part of a planet, and yes, there are other large contributors to anthropogenic climate change, but we have to lead by example. I also hope that downstream, that we see further work. I appreciate that this measure directs in terms of carbon emission. I think there will come a time when we will see a similar bill revolving around diesel fuel carcinogens. We are at a point where both the Department of Health and Human Services and the EPA now classify diesel fuel as a likely carcinogen. The good news is that biodisols can have up to an 85% reduction in carcinogenic compounds. So I believe within a couple of years, there will be further conversations. Clearly, carbon, as I said, as I led with, the climate change is the biggest factor, and that's why I'm, I'm super excited to be supporting this tonight. But I hope that we'll be seeing something like this within a couple of years regarding diesel carcinogens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Counselor member Hunt.
Thank you. I agree with counsel president Mertz. I think that climate change is, is one of the important challenges that we are facing right now. And I'm very glad to see this resolution coming forward. And I was also glad to have the information presented by the, by the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency representative as well. I personally do not see why we are, why we as a city in support of this resolution are requesting that the agency take into consideration the possible market effects of what a different state is doing in terms of the technology. I don't think that this is, I think we're providing broad support for this, we're providing broad support for this Clean Fuel Standard in the letter. And we, as a city, have a number of goals regarding reducing our carbon emissions that this aligns with. And we also know that as a number of our communities are along major roadways, we know that we have air pollution and air toxics concerns that, that directly impact our residents. So I see that as the more pressing issue. And I think that as a city, we should be broadly supportive, but I don't see why it's our role to urge the agency to take into account some fairly complicated market effects on possible technology adoption, especially if we're arguing that we support, we support this effort and we support that it's aggressive, we support that we need to achieve this carbon reduction. So, so I'm broadly supportive. I would move that we remove the paragraph, it's the second-to-last paragraph regarding the taking into consideration the timeline for implementation and that the timeline is aggressive relative to other states.
Is there a second for the amendment? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Director Fujimoto, I wonder if you want to address that and provide some additional information for why that is in the letter?
Sure. I think I explained it a bit before. And, you know, I think that it was a note, more than anything else, and for consideration in order to, in a way, for the agency to be able to respond to it and address that potential concern. But certainly, if the city is wishing to provide broad support and not get into the details, I think removing that section from the letter would, it would still carry the weight of the city's overall intent.
Counselor member Ray.
Just a question about the implications of setting targets and then not meeting those targets. What's the implication of, of that down the road?
That's an excellent question. I think that comes down to a question of compliance and where the agency sees the overall credit and market relative to what they're seeing in the various actors. Because it applies to a whole variety of different transportation fuels, it's possible that that might be the case with an individual fuel producer as opposed to an overall kind of, you know, production or fuel type, I guess. So I don't have the kind of appropriate answer for that, but my assumption would be that they would look at that depending on the scenario that's involved and decide whether or not it's kind of individual action or something more systemic to the way that's been addressed.
So would there be the potential for fines or other punitive actions if we don't make collectively the targets?
I believe it's the, I don't have all the details on the enforcement mechanisms, but I believe they do have those to ensure compliance.
I guess what I'm reacting to is if we want to talk about an aggressive timeline, you know, that's one thing, if there are no repercussions of not making an aggressive timeline. But if we're going to establish and we're going to not recognize that this is aggressive and there is penalties for not making it, that's a whole different discussion that I don't know that we're, I don't know that we as a body are collectively prepared to have. So that's what I'm just reacting to there.
Deputy counsel president Batiste.
So in, in regard to, I think, maybe I'll speak to both. In regard to the amendment, I think that we're keying in on a couple of areas that maybe we should be basically supplying broad, broad support at this point. I'll come back and talk to the main motion.
Any other comments? Looking around to see if there's anybody else before I go back to counsel member Hunt. Counselor member Walsh.
So I think this is one of those issues where we can either choose to get down into the weeds or we can recognize that we are not the PSCAA. We are a city who is expressing our values and our community's values to an agency who is going to get deep down into the weeds. And I would rather not, as a city who has values very much in the environmental protection and wanting to address climate change, I would not want us to put up a stop sign unless we well and truly understood that that stop sign was a very necessary thing for our community in particular. I would rather allow a larger agency that is going to be able to get down into the weeds determine what the individual levers are. And I think it is our opportunity to profess our community values without putting limitations on that.
Counselor member Hunt? If there's nobody else who hasn't spoken already?
I completely agree with counsel member Walsh, and that is the intent of the... I completely agree with Councilmember Walsh, and that is the intent of the amendment. I also wanted to add, I think there's going to be a lot of new technologies, a lot of changes to existing technologies to meet any of these goals that we're setting to address climate change. It's going to be a big challenge. And I think to, to try to say that there's this one area that, I think that they're going to have to look at a lot of things. So, I think taking a higher level approach and saying we're broadly supportive is, is my preference.
It's called for the vote on the amendment, which was to, did, I don't have it open in front of me. Thank you. Amend the comment letter to remove the second-to-last paragraph with respect to the implementation timeline. Anything else, or a call for the vote? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And back to the main motion. Is there any additional discussion on the main motion? Deputy Council President Batiste.
So, just briefly, so many important things have already been talked about tonight, but just the importance of us being able to speak to this and bring this forward and talk about climate change in general, being able to bring forward a resolution and to actually talk about and continue to talk about clean fuel standards, I think is incredibly important. And I think it's also incredibly important that we, that we lead by example.
Additional comments? All those in favor of the main motion to approve Resolution Number 2019 dash 16, supporting adoption of clean fuel standards and directing the administration to transmit a comment letter to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency as amended. Signify, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. I want to thank Director, and there are lots of hands in the air. I want to thank Director Fujimoto. I think council made a really good point on, we want to show broad support. And I appreciate staff's effort to navigate between an agency and their recommendation and our legislature, who made a decision not to go forward and to try and find you some common ground. So, it's a difficult dance to do sometimes, but I appreciate your effort in trying to make that work.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item under regular business is AB 7860, 2020 Arts Grant Recommendation. This is the first time that this item is before council, and I'd like to ask our arts coordinator, Amy Dukes, to make her way up to the podium for her presentation.
And Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to present the 2020 Arts Grants Recommendations to you. And I'm Amy Dukes, Arts Coordinator for the city. Before I get started, I would just like to acknowledge the two arts commissioners that are here tonight, the Chair of the Arts Commission, Julie Griffin, and the Vice Chair of the Arts Commission, Trish Blor. And just thank them for all of their work reviewing these grants and making difficult decisions. Oh, I have to push that button. So, I'm here to present the 2020 Arts Grant Funding Recommendations, which are being forwarded to you by the Arts Commission after a considerable review. There are 27 recommended grants, and the grant amount totals $175,000. And just before we get started, I wanted to remind everyone, or just let you know, that this is actually not a general fund item. The arts grants are funded through the Municipal Arts Fund. That is a special fund, and it is funded through two sources. 5% tax on non, or I'm sorry, for-profit admissions. So, that's primarily our movie theaters. And then, a half a percent on city capital improvement projects. And that, those funds generally go specifically to public art projects, but this is the funding source for these arts grants. And then, a little bit about our process and timeline. It's not much different than other years. We do try to get out the application a little bit earlier each year, if able. So, this year, it was released at the very beginning of August, and then the deadline was October 4th. In between that time, we are providing a lot of technical assistance, meeting with applicants, and checking in with previous applicants. And then, the Arts Commission reviews, they have about a month to review all of the applications. We had 29 this year. And then, our grant panel was on November 4th. It was very well attended. We had, actually, 19 applicants came to watch the deliberations, provide public comment, and really see the process and the thought that went into reviewing the applications. And then, we're here tonight to forward those recommendations to you via the Agenda Bill 7860. If all goes well, we will initiate contracts in 2020. And just to let you know, the Arts Commission does conduct site visits throughout the year so that every funded program receives a site visit, evaluation by the Arts Commission. And then, we also ask a fairly thorough evaluation from the arts grant recipients. And quickly, our criteria. Of course, we want strong artistic merit and quality, very interested in the fact that the grants as a whole are reaching a broad sector of our public, also providing things to draw tourism to the city as well. We are looking for fiscal stability, managerial and administrative capacity to handle the grant. And then, also, we hope that this grant is leveraging additional funds. And then, we also want to connect to the city's other goals and priorities. The Arts Commission actually is guided by the cultural element of the comp plan, as well as its own strategic directions, and of course, the city's strategic plan. So, we're really looking to see how these grants can further all of the goals outlined in those plans. And just really quickly, we're also looking for sort of a good distribution across different mediums. So, this is how things fall out. Theater always is big, this is by dollars. So, village theater, of course, kind of skews the theater category a bit. And then, although these grants haven't happened yet, we are able to kind of estimate what some of the community benefit would be. So, based on the slate of grants that are before you tonight, that represents about 200 free events and programs throughout 2020 in Issaquah, which would reach approximately 300,000 people. And then, I don't have a dollar figure for you, but all of them, all of them are leveraging additional funding for our nonprofit sector. And then, of course, there's the sort of intangible qualitative factors of bringing the community together. So, I'm just here to answer any questions that you have. And of course, the recommended motion is to approve the 2020 Arts Grants.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Ms. Dukes? Councilmember Ray, Councilmember Hunt?
So, I'm just curious, on the Challenger Elementary School, the all-inclusive library, their total project budget is $2,000. They requested $2,000, and we gave them $2,500?
So, we asked that...
Bonus round, right?
Yeah. So, we asked that each school provide us with a grant and an ask of no more than $2,500. And we asked that they only submit one application per school, and that they have the principal sign off on their application so that we know that we're getting one application per school. And they sent us two. That actually totaled like 30, $5,000, or $4,500. And so, the Arts Commission did want to give them the full funding for the school that they were eligible for, and then we'll work with them on how they want to distribute those funds.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I wondered how, how stable this funding is. Is it always around this amount? Or in recent years, has it been around this amount, or is it, is it changing over time?
So, the revenue is fairly stable. I mean, we're definitely subject to what's playing at the movies. So, some years are better than others. We are consistently around $350,000 to $400,000 for the, that portion of the fund. Our requests are generally higher than they are this year because we have lost Art East as an organization, so we did see a reduction in requests this year. We also had Village Theater only request the amount of funding for which they're actually able. We cap how many, how much of funding one applicant can get. And in the past, they've always asked for more, just in the off-chance that something different changes. So, this year, they actually only asked for what they're eligible for. So, we did see a reduction in the amount that was requested. But it is pretty stable, around $175,000 of granting.
Other questions? Council President Mertz.
Do we, I'm struck by, this is just an amazing list. It's, it's an amazingly eclectic and wonderful list of organizations that we have in the community. And it seems a shame that we don't have a mechanism to promote how our, how our spending is going. I feel like when we had the committee structure, we spent more time in committee, and the public could see this. I mean, obviously, the public can go in and look at the same document I'm looking at. But do we have any mechanism to highlight? I mean, some of these just look really interesting. Freehold Theater, Lab Studio, Engaged Theater, Influence the Choice Video Contest. I mean, there's just, I, I would love it if we had some way each month to maybe highlight one of, one of these recipients on the city's website or someplace so that we could draw attention to the amazing arts community that we have in this town.
Thank you for that suggestion. We do have lots of the groups will come and give presentations to the Arts Commission. So, the Arts Commissioners are well informed, and of course, they're also making those site visits. But we should share the information more broadly. We do always offer the opportunity for the city to promote the different events and activities that are happening so that the broader public knows about them. And we are in the process of redesigning our website. Just collected lots of pictures from all these groups so that we can do a better job. And then, finally, the Arts Commission is working on an annual report that we can put out via the website that will isolate all of that a little bit better. Thank you.
I think City Administrator Bob Kowits would like to add.
And we certainly can do a press release with this and make sure that it's publicized through our social media outlets. We can connect it to our weekly E-News. So, I think all of the above.
Thank you.
Additional comments or discussion? And I get a motion. Council President Mertz?
I move to approve funding for the 2020 Art Grants as recommended by the Arts Commission for a total expenditure of $175,000.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The motion is to, oop, sorry, who am I missing? Councilmember Goodman?
I'm going to support it, but I just wanted to thank the Arts Commission for all that, for all that you do.
Nice. Thank you. There is a motion to approve the funding for the 2020 Arts Grant as recommended by the Arts Commission for a total expenditure of $175,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is AB 7864, Amendment to Interlocal Agreement and Modification of Covenant with King County relating to recreation facilities, specifically Julius Bohm Pool. This is a request for authorization, and this is the first time that this item has been before council. And our Parks Director, Mr. Watling, is up at the podium for a presentation.
Mayor, thank you. Good evening, council. This is a topic related to our 2020 budget. I know it's something we've discussed and deliberated, so I'll give a really quick staff report to provide some context for this. This Agenda Bill seeks amendments to our agreements with King County, thereby giving us the ability, us, the city of Issaquah, the ability to charge resident, non-resident rates at the city-owned Julius Bohm's pool. This would thus allow us to be consistent within our city facilities and programs in how we charge resident, non-resident rates. A little bit of background, the city was built by King County and was opened in 1972. This was part of their Forward Thrust Bond effort back in the late '60s. That pool was transferred, the pool was transferred to the city of Issaquah in 1995. Since that time, it's been operated by the city and supported by our city general fund. That's the past 24 years that operation's been going on as well. Capital improvements that have been made by the pool have been made by the city of Issaquah, most recently by the residents of Issaquah in the passage of the 2013 Park Bond. $5 million of those funds went towards the, the city pool. The interlocal agreement that was signed and entered into with King County in 1994, that transferred the pool to us is what needs to be amended. Also, in this Agenda Bill, you'll notice there's a modification that is needed within the restrictive covenant of that agreement. What the, the interlocal and covenant did was it limited the city's ability to charge a differential rate, a resident, non-resident rate. We approached King County as we pursued this 2020 budget request of charging resident, non-resident rates, seeking the county's approval of this. They fully support this amendment and modification. In fact, they recognize that pool transfers that occurred after the city of Issaquah transfer in 1994, there were a number of pool transfers that happened in the early 2000s. Within those transfers, the county allowed for differential rates to, to happen. So, what will, this amendment will, will do will allow us to be consistent with, with those other pool transfers that occurred. One last note, this action in this Agenda Bill is not seeking actual approval of the fees. This is merely authorizing, or is the authorizing amendment that would allow the city, if we chose, if we choose to charge resident, non-resident rates at the pool.
Thanks.
Thank you, Director Watling. Are there questions? Is there a motion? Council President Mertz?
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the amendment to the 1994 interlocal agreement with King County related to the ownership, funding, operation, and maintenance of parks, open space, recreation facilities, and the modification of the restrictive covenant to the Julius Bohm Pool to allow for differential pool use fees for non-city residents.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Being no discussion, no comments, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda this evening is AB 7878, Low Income Utility Discount Program. This will require direction to the administration. This item was requested by the council during budget deliberations. Tonight, council's being asked to provide direction on the proposed program. Though typically, this would occur during a study session due to the time sensitivity of this item, the administration is requesting policy direction at tonight's meeting. And we have our Sustainability Director, Mr. Fujimoto, back at the podium.
And Madam Mayor, maybe before David starts, just to give a little preamble to this. The council, through the study session process, really said this was important. And so, your staff went back and kind of put our thinking caps on and really took to heart the charge to get something that we could put together for January 1. The, the program we have, we really feel confident is such that we can implement it that way, largely relying on the Puget Sound Energy and their existing program. We don't think this is a final solution in order to look on these discounts, but we do think it's the one that's likely to have the most success in helping people starting January 1. So, we recognize that there will likely be things that we will learn during the course of the year. We don't want you to feel that this is in any way we felt was the best, most complete way to do this, but we felt it was the way to affect the change you were looking to affect by January 1. So, with that preamble, David, I'll, I stole a little thunder, I realize, but, but, but I'll let you continue.
Thank you very much. Glad to be back. So, as Madam Mayor and City Administrator Bob Kowits mentioned, we are here to get some direction from city council on how to proceed with the Low Income Utility Assistance Program. As was noted, we recognize that there has been limited time for analysis and collection of additional details, but we're happy to walk through this, and we'll take questions along the way to help provide some clarification as needed. So, as I mentioned, I will walk through kind of the various components of the Utility Assistance Program. You might recall that earlier in this fall, on September 10th, there was a memo that was provided along with the consideration, the first consideration of utility rates, which initially spoke to this issue. I think it was thought at that point in time that the consideration could be made in 2000 as a work, or 2000, yeah, 2020, excuse me. Thank you. As a part of the work program, but then I think as through budget proceedings continued, there was a general desire to try and advance that work and have it occur in, to coincide with the adjustments that would be happening with the rate and utility tax increases. In considering an overall objectives for a Utility Assistance Program, there's several kind of goals and objectives, if you will, that we considered in looking for this, both to expand the number of eligible... to expand the number of eligible households, which we heard was something that was desired. We do have a current Low Income Senior Discount Program. We want to look at opportunities for expanding that beyond that population. As I mentioned before, taking opportunities to help mitigate, mitigate the impacts of the utility costs, sort of providing some focus there in terms of the benefit that's provided. And then we also know that the administration of these types of programs from experience from other utilities can be quite high depending on how the program is structured. So keeping an eye to that. And then also because there is a, a loss of revenue to the overall utility rate base, keeping that in consideration as well. And then as was mentioned, the primary, one of the key considerations was the timing and implementation in January. And as, as we proceed forward, there are some kind of key considerations to keep in mind that are important to the design of a Utility Assistance Program. And those include things such as the income level or income threshold for qualification, the types of households that are covered, meaning, or, and the population that's covered. So are they individuals with disabilities? Is there income or age restrictions? Does it apply to single family and multifamily? Ownership and rental? Those are all important considerations. The assistance amount and the form, so the total benefit provided, as well as the shape and form. So in this case, we, one of the recommendations is for rebate. And then as mentioned before, the complexity and the cost for implementation of the program itself. The proposed Utility Assistance Program has two different parts. There is a Low Income Household Assistance Program, which was, as mentioned, linked to a program from Puget Sound Energy, which is their Heating Assistance Program. It's linked to, it's provided for both single and multifamily, and it comes in the form of an annual assistance rebate, which we'll talk further about. And then the second piece of that is an expanded Senior Utility Discount, which is the current program. In terms of the Low Income Household Assistance Program, as I mentioned before, in terms of the income qualification piece of this, we really looked around to different opportunities because one of the higher administrative pieces is income verification, that if we could kind of tag onto an existing program and utilize that effectively, that helps us both to enroll participants quicker as well as use that as a mechanism for which the city can use for verification, so we wouldn't have to duplicate verification. Puget Sound Energy works through a contract with the nonprofit organization Hope Link, and Hope Link does that verification process on their behalf. They have quite an extensive process of applications. They collect materials, they verify income and look at the documentation. They also arrange meetings with the applicants as well. So there's a fairly extensive process, and that's similar with other utilities as well. So that's a piece that if we're able to use the same income threshold, then that saves the city from the, the need to do that. So if an applicant qualifies for PSE Help, they qualify for the city's program essentially. Puget Sound Energy has indicated that they're, they have about 354 households currently enrolled in Issaquah in their program. Oh, and sorry, and then one, most notably, their program is based on an income threshold of 150% of federal poverty level. So that's an important thing to keep in mind. A little bit more on income qualification level, there's a variety of ways in which you can look at this. I provide some information here on households and cost burden by income level, just as one point of reference. You certainly could think about kind of cost burden by medical costs, for example, or other things, but just to get a sense of how our households in Issaquah land in terms of one of their primary expenses every month, in terms of cost burden for housing, you'll see at the very extremely low income levels at less than or equal to 30% of area median income, that nearly 78% of Issaquah households, excuse me, are cost burdened or severely cost burdened. And because the federal poverty level thresholds are a little bit different than what's being used for, what we use for housing affordability levels, which is the area median income, provided a table here to provide a little bit of a cross-reference. So the Puget Sound Energy Program at 150% of federal poverty level, it varies by household size. And so, for example, a two-person household at the 150% federal poverty level to qualify would require an income at $25,368, and that falls below the 30% area median income, whereas at the four-person household at $38,628 is just, is between 30% and 40% of area median In terms of household coverage, under the Low Income Household Assistance Program, there would not be limitations based on age or disability. It would cover both single-family and multifamily households, ownership and rental. The, the, the kind of expansion of the program to consider multifamily housing does have some ramifications in terms of program complexity. And this is because the city utility does not bill individual units for multifamily like we do for single-family households. So it's not as simple as providing a rate discount or a bill credit. There's a different mechanism that's required in order to provide the equivalent of the utility costs, which multifamily tenants would normally see as part of their rent. So this is typically handled throughout the region for programs that do have a multifamily program through some form of rebate to those households. In this case, we're suggesting that qualifying residents would need to be residents here in Issaquah for the, over the course of the past year. A little bit more, I showed before the housing cost burden by median income level. This is showing all households. And this is just to illustrate the point that it is important to include rental households, which generally tend to be in multifamily housing types. That represents about 36% of cost burden or severely cost burdened households. If you were to break down, I don't have, I didn't present this in this slideshow, but if you were to break down this by rental and owners instead of all households, you would see that at 30%, nearly all households are cost burdened at 30% area median income. And at 30 to 50%, 69% of households are cost burdened or severely cost burdened, and even at 50 to 80%, about 62%. So clearly, with rental housing, that is a significant portion of their overall costs.
Councilmember Hahn?
So I, I think the answer is, is in there with all the numbers that you just said, but what percentage of cost burden, approximately what percentage of cost burdened families in our community would we expect to be eligible at this 150% of the federal poverty level?
So, so there's the, all the households that fall within the income threshold would be eligible to participate in the program. So as long as those households met that threshold, depending on household size, then they would be eligible. So it's, the, the threshold is about income, it's not about housing cost burden.
Right. So the, so the intent of the question is to understand of those individuals that are cost burdened, what, what percentage are we actually going to, with this 150% of the federal poverty level, approximately what percentage of those individuals that we know in our community are cost burdened would be eligible for this discount?
150%.
That's what we're...
I don't think we have a finite number on that because the household size variability in the, but we did provide some estimates for what we thought would be covered. And I believe those are later, or they're covered in the table, but it was between 2,300 and 2,600 households, total households. That doesn't, there is a portion of those that are not severely or cost burdened. But as I just mentioned, I think this is where it gets to your point, because that's pretty close to 30% of area median income, nearly, nearly all of the rental households are severely or either cost burdened or severely cost burdened. I apologize, it's kind of multiple numbers on the numbers.
It's kind of, I think the answer is in there. I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding, I think, the, so I'm, I'm trying to understand of cost burdened households, what percentage...
Would be helped by this program.
Would be helped by this program. And I, potentially helped, you know?
Correct.
I don't know what the adoption is. It's been low for some other programs.
Very low.
But the potentially helped, and I, I don't understand that, but maybe I can get there after.
I think it's a little bit challenging because there are a number of cost burdened households and severely cost burdened households, which are higher than the income threshold, and we don't have all the numbers, at kind of all levels to be able to disaggregate that. But it's certainly something we can take a little closer look at.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Continue.
In terms of the, the Low Income Household Assistance, as I mentioned before, with the, the addition of multifamily housing and in an interest in trying to provide for kind of a streamlined, more efficient kind of a program, the recommendation is to provide annual rebate check to qualifying households. The intent is to try and reflect the intent to help mitigate the increase in utility costs. The 100, oops. And as a part of that, there would be an annual enrollment process, and then there would be an annual rebate check, which would be issued. If the intent is to, to kind of look towards utility costs, the, the recommendation was to have it be at about $100 per household. That is more than the impact of the rates and utility tax increases for both single-family and multifamily households, but we felt like as a starting point, that, that would be a good place to start. As a point of reference, the average multifamily bill, not including stormwater, is about $400 per year or per unit per year. And for single-family households, the average bill is about $1,445 per year. So then what that translates into is the $100 for multifamily households is about a 20% discount. For single-family households, it significantly less, it's about, I believe, 6%. In terms of costs and some of our early estimates, the total cost, and this is not for the program administration cost, this is just the cost for the rebate program, is, will depend on participation. And we've seen from other utility programs that these can vary widely. The vast majority of utility programs tend to fall in the range of about 15 to 25%. So we provide a range of numbers here. Puget Sound Energy's estimate for their participation rate, which was 354 households, they've estimated that, that is 15% of eligible households.
It's President Mertz?
I'm sorry, say that again. The estimate for Issaquah is that 15% of households are at 150% or less of federal poverty level?
The estimate from Puget Sound Energy on their participation rate, which is set at 150, the participation rate in the program is 354 households.
Right. You said that before, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the total number of eligible households.
So how did we get 2,300 to 2,600 households?
So the, this was an estimate that was, and I might need to phone a friend here, but this was a preliminary estimate looking at the income levels and the households that would qualify under the program. So I was looking at some data from American Community Survey and how many households would fall within those income thresholds.
David?
The low, the second part of the program is the Low Income Senior Discount Program. And as you are probably aware that we do have a current program, it qualifies for households which are 62 years of age or older. It's currently set at 50% of area median income. It is tied to the state RCW Revised Code of Washington that sets the property tax exemption rate. And there are some recent changes at the state legislature, which moved that it was previously frozen. And so it's actually going to be increasing in 2020 to 65% of area median income. Our King County Assessor has been reaching out to a variety of communities, and we've been talking with them about opportunities for jointly promoting that program. So that, but that, so that is one program that will be changing. Currently, it only applies to single-family owner-occupied households. And we have a modest proposal to increase that to include rental households as well. Just today, we had received an email from a resident who was inquiring about it and had been confused about it not applying to her household, in which case, and she's a rental household. So it was good to hear that there is an opportunity to address that. The discount with this program is significantly greater. It provides for a 75% discount on water and sewer costs and exempt, full exemption from stormwater fees.
Question?
That's my member, Richard Stone.
Thank you. There's a significant portion in our utility rate users that goes to, is passed through to King County. I assume it's not 75% off that.
The, the way the ordinance is structured, it, it does provide for 75% off of that full rate.
Oh, even the King County pass-through numbers? Okay. Thank you.
Want to continue?
A little bit of information about area utility discount programs. This was included in the memo in September, and it was updated with the current year income threshold. I think the prior information was from a study that was conducted by the Cascade Water Alliance. But a couple of points to note here is that for a number of these area utility discount programs, most provide for a low-income discount for seniors and individuals with disabilities. A fewer number provide for either all low-income households or multifamily residents. Those include Bellevue, Semamish, and Seattle. Each of those programs themselves are a little bit different. Bellevue does provide for a single-family senior household rebate, as well as a multifamily tax rebate. They don't provide a utility discount. Semamish does provide for a utility discount for all low-income households. And then Seattle provides for a discount, or a discount, but they're able to do that because they work with Seattle City Light to provide a credit on those bills. So each of them is a little bit different based on their circumstances. This table is, provides a quick summary of the Utility Assistance Program as currently designed. As I mentioned before, it includes two parts, both the Low Income Household Program, which is completely new, which is in the right-hand column. And kind of just to recap, it takes the form of an annual rebate. There's no age or disability restrictions. It includes owners and renters, both single-family and multifamily. It is tied to the Puget Sound Energy Help Program at 150% of federal poverty level. And the estimated cost ranges from 37 to 74 or further, depending on participation rates. Our estimate initially is about 2,300 to 2,600 households would be eligible and would provide a rebate check of $100 per year. The Senior Discount Program is substantially similar to the current program, with the exception that it would be expanded to include rental owners, or rental households as well. And then finally, on to the recommendations. As was mentioned, we recognize that there's some additional work that could be done on this and understanding better some of the participation rates, as well as the eligible household populations. We also know that there are some other alternatives for implementation of our program. There's some additional data that we would love to look at in terms of how this relates to affordability ratios and hours of minimum wage. That's some of the data that we've requested but not have received from the, the folks that conducted the study on behalf of the Cascade Water Alliance. We also know that in conversations with Hope Link, which is one of a couple of different nonprofit providers, they are interested in talking with the city about potentially helping to, to implement a program, but they really have no capacity to do that on a short timeframe. This is their busy time of the year. They're quite busy enrolling people in the program, but they would be happy to either respond to requests for proposals or discuss further options for what a program would look like. So we are recommending a stepped approach where the city could implement a program in the near term, but then take 2020 to evaluate further considerations on that. And if we choose, if you chose to make some changes to the program, those could be implemented later in the year, or at the time, if there were any future rate adjustments, that could be considered as well. So for this evening, as was mentioned, we are looking for direction, whether to proceed with the, the program as designed. If you have some areas where you'd like to see us consider some modifications, excuse me, to one or more components, or if you would choose to continue to evaluate options, if we were to continue to evaluate options, that would probably take us beyond the January if we were to continue to evaluate options, that would probably take us beyond the January start timeframe. So please keep that in mind. And as I mentioned at the top of the presentation, some key considerations are to think about are the customers covered, that would be covered. So seniors, individuals with disabilities, single and multifamily residents, ownership and rental, the qualifying income threshold under Puget Sound Energy's program, that's 150% of federal poverty level, which is plus or minus 30% of AMI. That contrasts with the senior program, which is at 65% in 2020 of AMI. So a difference there. Program complexity, when you consider we're recommending essentially two different subprograms, both a senior program and a rebate program, that could be expanded or separated into additional programs, but that complexity will likely increase administration costs. The assistance amount in the form, so a discount or a rebate are very different kind of ways of providing a benefit back to the customers. Considerations could include a discount percentage or the rebate amount. And then the overall cost of the rate base. Initial estimates are that for every $100,000 in cost, there's about a 0.5% impact on the combined water, sewer, and stormwater rates. And then in terms of next steps, we're looking for feedback from council this evening. And depending on that feedback, we will proceed to prepare an ordinance which could be considered for the December 2nd council meeting. We would also start preparations for promotion and rollout of the program, given the timing of it. And then the utility rates would be going into effect at that same time.
Thank you, David. I wonder if you could just leave the previous slide up so that as council is talking, deliberating, and providing feedback, we make sure we hit on every single one of these points. Deputy Counsel, President Patisse.
So first of all, I just wanted to thank, start by thanking you and your entire team for going forward so quickly as we were talking through utility rates and everything that we've talked about during budgeting. This was a pretty fast request and I, so I really wanted to give a big thank you to everyone who worked on this. I think that this is an incredibly important program and I think that a couple of components to it, going, starting with sort of the mirroring of the PSE eligibility seems to make sense to me as a starting point. And the, I was very happy to see with the expanded low income senior discount program that we now have a mechanism for anyone who is renting. And I think that it's really important to have that mechanism. And the most important part to me is I see this as a starting point and the ability for everyone to take a look at this now, give feedback now, but also to continue to work on this over 2020 and then have council take a look at this again and talk about what may be able to change or may be able to be improved. There are cities that have all low income, a complete low income portion to it, so how that would compare would be something that I would be interested in. I'll be sitting out there next time when I talk about that. So, and I think it's fantastic that Hope Link, they would be a great partner to be able to help, help make this an even better program. But I think having a starting point is really critical and just happy to see that at this point.
Thank you. Council President Mertz.
Madam Mayor, I'm wondering if I should move a motion before we discuss it further?
I think on the feedback part, I think it's, I'm going to check, call a friend, call my parliamentarian friend. I think it's okay for you just to provide your feedback outside of the motion because I believe your motion is to prepare the ordinance for the program. But we really need to hear from you on the items that David's got listed up on the bullet points. I think either is fine. So if you'd rather, you can move the motion. Either is fine.
Okay. Well, I'd like to move the motion, hoping that we can continue the conversation. I'd like to move to direct the administration to prepare an ordinance establishing the utility assistance program as proposed in Agenda Bill 7878, returning to council for adoption at the December 2nd, 2019 council meeting.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Okay. Let's continue with feedback and also questions and deliberations if you like. Councilmember Walsh.
So I very much appreciate the rapid response of the administration in addressing this as a council request. I think this is a starting point. The questions I would have is the administrative cost on our end of doing a $100 rebate check versus a utility bill discount? And how that comes into play as we look at online utility billing? Whether or not that makes it easier or harder? My preference, I think, would be to look at a percentage discount rather than just a $100 rebate. But I am sensitive to the fact that you're responding very quickly on this.
Councilmember Walsh, I think we want to provide just some more information on why rebate versus discount. David?
So the discount could certainly be pursued for single, direct billed customers, which are our single family customers. So under this proposal, for the non-senior, single family households, it's proposed as a rebate. That is an area where a discount could be considered. There's a little more administration cost for doing that. But for the multifamily households, that's a very different situation. So because we don't do the direct billing, some different form of compensation back to those households would be required. Typically, that is.
Or the compensation would go back to the apartment building owner and not necessarily the tenants inside.
Got it. So would we be able to pursue then for a single family homeowners, a percentage, and then for multifamily, a rebate?
Yes, that could be done.
Okay. So I would say from my perspective, that would be my preference. And then as we continue to evaluate options into 2020, just getting a better sense of what portion of our community can benefit from this and whether the 150% FPL is the right approach for our community or whether, considering that is a very small cost to us, how we might use this as a way to lower housing cost burden as a city.
Thank you. Administrator Bob Goodes, did you want to add in or Director Fujimoto? Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Next. Councilmember Hunt?
I also appreciate that this was a very quick turnaround and this was something that was really important for me to have information on before approving an increase in the utility rates. So I appreciate this quick turnaround and having this information tonight very much. I did want to point out that in the Cascade Water Alliance study, which we've talked about several, several times, we have the lowest participation rate of all the neighboring cities for the senior discount program. And I just noticed that although it says as of November 2019, we have a few more participants, the number that's in our packet is actually less than what they had when they considered in the Cascade Water Alliance program. So we still have very low participation. It's something that I think we still really need to work on. And I know we're taking steps in that direction, but especially as we are considering increasing utility rates, I think it's really important that we make sure that those that are eligible know about the program, that it's also accessible. I also note that in one, in the Cascade Water Alliance Commission study, they looked at the first time application submission procedure and two of the, two of the organizations that were considered, Summamish and Skyway, do have application processed by email. So I wonder if we can do that for our senior program, senior discount program, if that might increase our participation because currently we don't have that as an option. Really, I think it's just important that as we have these programs, that we make sure that the information gets out there and that we have that communication in place so that they're eligible. And then lastly, I do have some concerns about when you, when you showed the AMI and you showed what percent of 150% federal income level that translates to for our areas, area median income, especially for the, the single person. It was quite a bit lower than 30% AMI that we're, that we're putting this threshold. So I think there, there will be many families that are not eligible that are cost burdened under these rates because we have a very high cost of living. So I appreciate the information. I think there's more to be looked at. I would like to make sure that we really understand what percent of cost burdened households are eligible for this and also that we're getting the word out. But I appreciate that this is a good first step. I would like to look at a threshold that's more tailored to the needs of our community rather than set based on a federal poverty level in the future.
Thank you. Your point about the promotion of the existing program is well taken. I think it's something that we definitely want to improve upon. We did note that the, we've asked the authors for information about their participation numbers. We weren't able to replicate their numbers for their total eligible households, so we want to understand that a little bit further. And so that would be helpful for us. We are looking at providing for an online application. One of the issues that we have is that we can ask them to submit the base information, but anything that has personally identifiable information, we don't have the current capacity to manage. So that's why we can't handle a fully online system.
Well, I would just respectfully note that some, some organizations are using the online system, so it's something I think we should consider, that and other ways that we can increase the access for people who, who would benefit from the program.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rintstone?
Thank you. Just a general comment. I don't believe for a moment you just started working on this. I think it was, had to be months ago because this is, there's too much here. But again, my, the way of, backhanded way of saying, I appreciate the quality and assessment of what's in here, quite a bit that was done in a short period of time. I do agree with the comment earlier about that 100% of the federal poverty level isn't, doesn't catch enough. It does, I think there are many, for the intent and the spirit. So is it a good place to start? Can we use what PSA's, PSE is doing? That's a nice creative way to start. And I would encourage, though I won't be, well, maybe I will be, I don't know, but afterwards, I won't, you know, I would encourage you to find those other ways. But there's always admin costs, right? There's every one of these, I mean, that, that way, that whole idea of managing PII or personally identifiable information is non-trivial. There is more IT costs associated with that. So none of this is free. But to get this started, to understand participation, I think focusing on driving and getting more adoption of participation, I would set as a number one goal, refining some of these measures and taking care of, you know, whether, you know, adjusting, whether it be a rebate in a fixed amount or something else, maybe a percentage. The one I would encourage is, you know, I think there is a disincentive for some multifamily owners, owners, the people who do the renting, if there's, you know, for low income tenants. And if maybe they knew that they were going to get a discount, that they could then pass that on and there may be more units available to low income individuals and families. Something to explore, if that makes sense. So thanks, David.
Thank you. Additional comments? I want to thank you for all your comments. I know we're going to have a vote, but it's really clear that this program was super important to you, that it be done really quickly and that we make sure that it suits our community at some point in time when we have time to evaluate these so that you are sure that we are reaching out to those that are most in need and that they are able to take advantage of these programs. So thank you. Your comments were great. And the second part to this was the motion itself. And is there any other further discussion or comments before we go to the vote on the motion? The motion is to direct the administration to prepare an ordinance establishing the utility assistance program as proposed in AB 7878, returning to council for adoption at the December 2nd, 2019 council meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, David. I was going to check in with council and see if you would prefer to have a five minute recess since we have several items yet to go. Sounds good? Okay. We'll take a five minute recess. Okay. All right. So too. I was just looking at, this is how I learned to program. And one of these, in 1977, it had 50 programs. You could program basically 50 lines, right? And you had a little sheet of paper out there with codes, right? I love programming. I wrote, I wrote all sorts of little programs to do stuff. And yet I didn't go into computer science. No, this is not, this is not RPN. No, 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 no. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, yeah, that, reverse Polish, no, yeah. Yeah, no, TI never went to RPN. That was always, that was always the HP way. And I never, I never got into the HP numbers. I, nothing against them, the HP 48 was the big one when I was in school. Not me, even though I was Polish, you'd think I would have gone for RPN. Yes, me neither. But, all right. I don't know.
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 I was just looking at, this is how I learned to program. In 1977, it had 50 programs. You could program basically 50 lines, right? And you had a little sheet of paper, codes, right? For various
I never programmed that.
I loved programming. I wrote I wrote all sorts of little programs to do stuff.
My best friend.
And yet I didn't go into computer science.
That's got to be entry, right? Like, I love
No, this is not this is not RPM. No, 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 no. Yeah. Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, that's Reverse Polish. Yeah, no, T I never went to RPM. That was always that was always the HP way. And I never I never got into the HP company. I just died. Nothing against them. The HP 48 was the big one when I was in school.
Oh, me.
Not me. Even though I was Polish, you'd think I would have gone RPM.
Yeah. The graphic color.
Yes, me neither. But, alright. [inaudible]
His name is Chris.
I also bought better bats. You need a better bat.
[inaudible]
We didn't get we didn't get the
[laughing]
I heard you started
I don't know what they said in the second section. Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
Immediately come to the
I don't know what they said in the second section.
I don't know.
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 Yeah, that's what
Me too.
Yeah, I'll stay after on
Okay.
Yes.
Hey, you know what? Tomorrow I get to, tomorrow I get to drive my husband's Tesla, so he's taking my, yes, he's taking my vehicle in, my gas-guzzling vehicle in for an oil change, and I get to enjoy his oil-free car for the day. Yes, I know. Supposed to be my car, but his broke down, and so he got the Model 3 instead. I work from home, so it's kind of like
Yeah.
Do you like some ham?
Yeah.
I love it. I like it.
I love it.
I love it.
Oh, I love it.
She's so very much
Terrible.
Uh huh.
She
I like her voice.
Mm-hmm.
I, uh, city device
Two and a half to go.
Very benign question, but
You want a name?
Right?
Only a few more hours.
Yeah.
Somebody got five.
Former mayor.
I didn't say that.
I didn't say that.
I'm talking about
Okay, happy people over there. Hey, camera's starting.
That's the last one.
We love happy, and everybody's
You can be happy.
We love happy.
We love happy.
Everybody's
You can be happy.
Okay.
Happy people over there.
Hey, camera's starting.
That's the last one.
We love happy. We love happy, and everybody's
You can be happy.
We love 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 happy.
We are back from our recess, and the next item under regular business is AB 7850, Proposed 2020 Budget Revenue Sources Utility Tax. And this will be a proposal to adopt the ordinance. This item was included in the budget discussions and was forwarded to this meeting at the November 4th council meeting. Beth, will you be coming up for some introductory comments?
Before you
Doesn't sound like your microphone is on.
Before you is ordinance that would increase the utility tax rate on sewer, stormwater, and cable and water to 3%.
Thank you. We were not planning on repeating previous presentations that council had had, but if you have any questions at this time, we could entertain those. Councilmember Winterstein?
For clarification, in the on the agenda bill, it's actually page, oh, boy, that's not being numbered. Let me see. It's actually page three in the agenda bill. It's where you have, there's a table, and I know you're not going to know this off the top of your head. The rightmost column says 2020 projected revenue at recommended rate. Now, that number in terms of over, and I think that's just for those utilities, but I know that elsewhere, when we look at general fund utilities, there's a much higher number for utility tax. Could you explain the difference?
So we charge a utility tax on electricity, natural gas, solid waste, telephone, the city-run utilities that I mentioned, and cable. So the electricity, natural gas, solid waste, telephone, they're already at 6%. So what we're talking about here is raising the 3% just on those city-run utilities and cable, which are below, or either at 0 or 2.33% in the case of water. I don't have that table in front of me, so if that's not addressing your question, please
No, no, it is. There's 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 a couple million dollars missing, right? And I just wanted to make, I think that just wasn't clear to me, the way the bill is, is that these total amounts are just on these utilities, but when we look at overall funds from utilities, there are these other sources, they're just not mentioned.
Correct. I believe it's like 4.8 million is what we're projecting
Something like that, yes.
Something like that in in the 2020 budget.
And one last thing, it's a small little thing, but I took a look at my my gas, natural gas and electricity bill, and they have an interesting comment on there, effective rate of city sales tax, and it's over 6%. It's like six and a quarter, six and a half, FYI. It's actually printed right on the bill. And that's actually what they are calculating. It's not, they're not using a flat 6%, so might want to double-check that. I mean, hopefully, they're doing the right thing, but just happened to see it on a recent bill, and it is a little bit different than what we've been reporting.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion. Let's present March.
I'm sorry, I guess I I guess I do still have a question.
Okay, question first.
I'm looking at the proposed ordinance, or the proposed the proposed motion, and it doesn't say, it doesn't specify the 6% versus 3%. And there's a, and there's recommended language above, but the actual, the actual motion doesn't reference the rate. So I'm worried that the council's intent might not be clear in the language, the proposed motion in front of us.
Well, to our parliamentarian. Councilmember March, the ordinance that you all should have in your packet should specify, does specify the 3% in Section 2. And so despite the title not including that rate, it is presumed when you make your motion, you're referring to the ordinance that was distributed to you all in your packet, which I have here.
Thank you. Then I move to adopt ordinance number
2883.
Amending Chapter 5.32 of the Issaquah Municipal Code relating to the utility business and occupation tax for the cable, television, water, sewer, and stormwater utilities, providing for referendum and establishing an effective date.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
I'm actually going to oppose this, and I'll talk about it at the last item on the agenda this evening. I do have one question for you now, since it's germane to the utility tax. Just to be clear, as I mentioned, or asked a question I asked earlier in the evening, that we collect the money for the King County Metro Sewer. It's a pass-through. And the tax on the sewer that's, we're intending here, we would be taxing that amount that we collect from King, we collect from residents and pass through, we would be taxing that amount. That's clear, right?
Correct.
It's a service provided by King County. We're collecting for them, but we're taxing that amount.
Correct.
Which is about two-thirds, it's about, it's about a little more than twice as much as the sewer amount for our residents, just
Yeah, and perhaps maybe it's sort of analogous to, you know, King County is providing that service similar to how Puget Sound Energy is providing natural gas and electricity service. It just happens to be this King County service is passing through us. But just because someone else is providing the service doesn't mean we can't tax it under the utility tax laws.
Did you have any more comments? Okay, any other comments from any other council members? Let's present March.
So this process is a little funny. If a member of the community, somebody moved to Issaquah today and and saw us all talking about this today and didn't understand the context where this whole conversation happened, that everybody has to figure out how they're going to roll up the conversation that's occurred in the last few weeks, and I very much respect how other council members are choosing to do it. For me, I make no secret of the fact that I opposed having utility taxes in general this time around and thought that we should continue to, that we should go to our recommended ending fund balance in our financial policies. But the way I'm moving forward this evening is that I saw, we got to a consensus at the end. We made a number of choices at the end to try to get to a final number that the majority of the council supported. And although I was, I did not prevail on this issue of going to 0%, I'm going to support this bill in the spirit of the aggregate package that the council chose as part of the deliberation process. Still, I will, I guess the one bit of scrappiness that I will I will add, even though I'm going to be supporting this bill, there was a conversation earlier during deliberation about the potential moving to 6% next year. I think there may be some council members who are sort of assuming we're going to go in that direction. I will continue to oppose increasing utility taxes, and we'll hope that next year we will find solutions that will not be regressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from other council members? Looking around, not seeing any. Oh, Deputy Council President Patisse?
So this is certainly something that I don't take lightly. I think I could probably speak for all of the council members here that we don't take this situation lightly, and it was tough to be in the place where we were, where we were looking at what the city of Issaquah has done in the past, what other cities have had done, and potentially moving from 0 to 6% so rapidly. And we, the council, was able to talk, talk this through, and we proposed 3%. The, the reason, the rain goes right along with this. The reason that I will be supporting this tonight is, you know, I wish there were a different solution, but I really do think that working on a staggered approach is the way to go, and did not feel that going all the way to 6% was something that was the right decision. So I'll be supporting this this evening. I'll be looking to fellow council members in the future, but I think that taking a stepped approach was was the right approach. I did consider doing something a little bit less, but after our conversation, decided to stay with the 3%. So for those reasons, I'll be supporting this this evening.
Thank you. Are there other council members that would like to provide comments? Councilmember Ray?
So I think we worked all very diligently to put together the 2020 budget, and that was, that was quite a arduous exercise. I don't think anybody really enjoys raising taxes of any sort, and it was just a part of our financial reality right now. And I think the 3% tax increase that's currently on the table was really instrumental in crafting and bringing that budget together. And I know there were differences of opinions, but I think we got to something that that made sense. But I do concur with Council President March, that I'm not sure that a 6% tax rate next year is a foregone conclusion. I think there's still quite a bit of work to do before we get anywhere near making that decision.
Thank you. Other comments? Looking around, not seeing any. So if there is no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2883, amending Chapter 5.32 of the Issaquah Municipal Code relating to the utility business and occupation tax for the cable, television, water, sewer, and stormwater utilities, providing for referendum and establishing an effective date, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion carries six to one. The next item on our agenda this evening is AB 7757, the 2020 levy and revenue sources. The action here tonight is to request adoption of the ordinance, and there will be a presentation or an introductory comment.
Introductory comment.
Introductory comment. Thank you, Beth.
So the property tax levy ordinance before you tonight would allow the city to levy the 1% plus new construction and banked capacity in 2020, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Director Goldberg? If not, would somebody care to make a motion?
All right, that just happened fast. I would move to adopt ordinance number...
2884.
...levying property taxes for the city of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2020, on all property, both real and personal, in said city which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wintersheim.
I'm actually going to be opposing this for reasons I've given before, but I'll discuss them more later on, the final item on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Wintersheim. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2884, levying property taxes for the city of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2020, on all property, both real and personal, in said city which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries six to one. Next item on our agenda this evening is item H, AB 7849, proposed 2020 budget revenue sources, parks recreation fees, and the request is to adopt the proposed ordinance. This item was included in the budget discussions and was forwarded to this meeting at the November 4 council meeting. I'd like to ask our Director of Finance, not our Director of Parks, our Director of Finance, to provide some introductory comments.
So this ordinance would raise a series of parks fees for residents and nonresidents, and like with the other packages available to respond to questions, as is Director Watling.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? There are no questions, is there a motion?
Yes. Yes, I would like to move, sorry, remind myself, move to adopt ordinance number...
2885.
...amending certain recreation center pass fees and certain recreation program fees and facility rental fees established by ordinance number 2290 in order to better reflect current costs.
Second. Seconded by Wintersheim. Thank you. Moved and seconded, is there a discussion? Councilmember Hunt.
So I appreciate that we, in our council's revised budget that we'll be considering, we don't reduce the hours of the community center, we didn't reduce the services that we're providing. So I think that to continue providing these services, it is appropriate that we look at this and adopt this fee increase, and I'm glad to see that it doesn't coincide with the reduction in services. I think that's very important. I also wanted to urge us to consider the scholarships and make sure that for scholarships, for individuals that are interested in receiving those, that the word gets out there, and again, that we have the communication set up so that eligible families or eligible individuals know that we do offer scholarships of, my understanding is up to 100% with a $10 fee. So those scholarships are available, and we, I would urge us to make sure that we monitor that participation and make sure that that word is out about those scholarships, especially in light of increasing fees.
Thank you. Other council members? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2885, amending certain recreation center pass fees and certain recreation program fees and facility rental fees established by ordinance number 2290 in order to better reflect current costs, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda this evening is AB 7870, proposed 2020 budget revenue sources, cemetery fees, and the request would be to adopt the proposed ordinance. This item was included in the budget discussions and was forwarded to this meeting at the November 4 council meeting. And we have our Parks Director, Mr. Watling, here for some brief introductory comments.
Brief, yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as was stated before, this was discussed throughout the budget process, was introduced November 4. The one item I wanted to add was, council expressed a strong interest in having an assistance, a financial assistance program in place while we enacted this. We've been working hard and diligently with the Cemetery Board and with our operating partner. You'll notice within the Agenda Bill, within the updated section, we have a plan in place to finalize what that program looks like at the December Cemetery Board meeting. We then are asking that we initiate, starting January 1, a pilot program, pilot financial assistance program. We know we're going to be coming back to you, council, in the first quarter of next year with our management agreement with Flintoffs. At that time, we would ask you, give you the opportunity to either ratify that assistance program or amend it, that pilot program, and turn it into a permanent program. So we thought this was the most effective way to work with the Cemetery Board to get their acceptance, given their oversight of the Cemetery Fund, and also honor that January 1 date.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a question. So I'm looking at the proposed ordinance and the rates that are set in it. So we had, it looked like it used to be $1,000, and we're moving to a variable amount based on whether it's a full size or a half size and by location. Is that correct? I see, instead of $1,000, I see $2,500, $2,000, $1,500. You know the section I'm referring to?
I do, I don't have it in front of me, but yes, we've always had a full plot, half plot rate. The variance that is in this would be recognizing, as we open up, the Section 2 of Upper Hillside Cemetery being the highest and relatively most pristine area, there would be an increased fee for those plots as opposed to other plots within the cemetery.
And this pilot program would basically be half that rate?
Correct. What we're looking at is 50% being the rate for both full plot and half plot, as well as niche spaces, yes.
Got it. And what are these estate standard and estate doubles? Because they're on a, they're a whole different order of magnitude.
They are. And as you recall, as we worked on creating some variance in memorial options, our operating partner has pointed out, Flintoffs, there is a market for estate plots. So if you can imagine grouping four plots together and creating a little more private space, that's what an estate plot would be. We don't see that those would necessarily be eligible for the financial assistance program, but it's a service we think there's a market for.
Thank you for that explanation.
Additional questions? Councilmember Hunt, followed by Councilmember Ray.
Do I recognize that it explains that the discount program would be considered by the Cemetery Board at an upcoming meeting, and so that's why, that's part of why it's not completely detailed. But I did wonder about what plans are for that proposal as a starting point for eligibility, who would be eligible for that discount program?
That's to be discussed with the Cemetery Board. We're looking at something similar, either utilizing AMI or the federal poverty level to determine what that eligible level would be. And again, that's something that the Cemetery Board, when we met with them previously this month, still wanted to have some discussion and deliberation over.
Okay. I would urge that we consider something like area median income because costs of living in our area are different than federal levels, and so that seems to be more appropriate to our cost of living in our specific area. And then I also had a follow-up question. There was public comment earlier about the master planning process around the cemetery and that, and how this, these rates and these burial types fit into that master planning process. So I wonder if you could give us an overview of that and next steps.
Sure. Yeah, so these fees are merely one step. As has been noted before, the cemetery planning effort that we have initiated in this work will continue. As we look at now having these varied rates, we will be working with the Cemetery Board and the community on now identifying spaces within the existing footprint of the cemetery where these type of plots or memorial spaces could be created. So that will be a key part of that cemetery planning effort. Equally so, as I mentioned earlier, we have been working with our operating partner, Flintoffs, in formalizing a management agreement. That will also be part of the cemetery plan in its entirety, that will be coming to you the first quarter of next year.
Councilmember Ray.
The increased rates generate significantly more revenue than the current rates, I guess two times, right? And the upside of that is 20 years from now, we will have sold all the plots in the cemetery, and we will have $3 million in the Cemetery Fund. That's the way I'm reading that. And that $3 million then is intended to last in perpetuity for ongoing maintenance of the cemetery facility.
At that time, we would see how close we would get to it being in perpetuity, but we felt in this first effort of looking at the cemetery fees and taking a long view at the fees is we feel like this puts the Cemetery Fund in a much better position when that, when that period and that point of time arrives, yes.
Clearly. So would it be down the road 10 years from now, we're revisiting this and saying, we've sold 60% of our plots, we've got 20 left, here's what the actual costs look like, we could see another change in the cost of plots?
Yeah, well, we've talked with the Cemetery Board about, it's similar to a park strategic plan, we think every five years, probably a five-year window, at least taking a look, hey, how are we doing, where are we at, and at least review at that point in time.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Walsh.
So I'm a little concerned with the idea of us basically approving a discount program when we don't have the idea of how many people would be qualified or what the impacts would be. My concern is if the city is going to be a provider of cemetery services, that we be able to achieve this fund balance to provide maintenance for this service? And so I'm not seeing anything here on how that discount would affect our ability to maintain that fund balance. So while I agree with all of the planning that's been done around the ideas of increasing the fees in order to provide this service, I just don't feel like we have enough information to go ahead with a discount program, so.
So, good point. One of these things does not look like the other. You have received information on various discount programs and not this one. I believe that our intent administratively was to honor what we were hearing from all of you in all of your deliberations, is that any kind of increase, there are many council members who feel very strongly that we have to look at affordability issues. This one's not fully baked, so I would love to hear the conversation between the seven of you, where your comfort level is on moving something forward, not fully baked, recognizing, I do believe you'll have some council members that will speak in favor and some that will speak against. So that would be a great thing for you guys all to put your opinions out there. Councilmember Walsh.
So to continue with that, I would be perfectly fine with moving forward with this without a low-income discount component. From my perspective, when we're looking ahead at the city services assessment, the cemetery, I do not believe is a critical core component of what the city needs to provide as services based on taxpayer. So I'm not of the mindset that this is something that we should discount. I am willing to go with that idea, but only if it means that the cemetery does not end up being a burden to the city taxpayers.
So I'm going to request someone to put forward a motion. It sounds like we have a combination of questions and things to talk about, so Council President Martz.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number...
2886.
...adopting Section 2.20.040 of the municipal, Issaquah municipal code, in order to increase grave plot and maintenance fees, create new fees for additional memorial spaces, and establish a processing fee for transfers and quick claim deeds, and direct the Parks and Recreation Director in consultation with the Cemetery Board and Flintoff's Funeral Home and Crematory to develop and implement by January 1, 2020, a pilot burial assistance program, offering a 50% discount on burial services fees for low-income persons, with the eligibility requirements to be determined by the Director with the required consultation, and with the program to be brought back to the City Council by February 28, 2020, for review and ratification or change.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Council President Martz.
So I appreciate Councilmember Walsh, you're not wanting to sign a blank check. I don't think that's what this is. I think this is, there was, there were many options open to administrations to attempt to address the question that some of us asked during budget deliberation. The idea that they could implement fees on January 1, implement a pilot program that would come back to us by February 28 was one of the potential solutions to that. And I think that the questions around financial viability should be addressed by the Cemetery Board, and I expect would be addressed such that we would be able to have the sort of comprehensive discussion that you want to have about making sure we don't burden the residents of Issaquah on February 28. I will also say that you and I may be in a disagreement on the extent to which reasonably priced cemetery services are part of what we want to offer as a city.
Other comments? Councilmember Goodman, Councilmember Ray.
This question's probably for Jeff. So the Agenda Bill talks about bringing back the burial assistance program back to the City Council for review and ratification, and then, but the motion is for us to adopt a 50% discount as of January 1, and then that would be in effect until it comes back to us? I don't quite understand.
Yeah, what we're seeking is your approval to put a pilot program in place that would start January 1. What would come back to you would be that program for your either ratification or amendment at a later date.
So I guess the issue I see with that is that we have a, if we don't, if we don't know what the permanent, assuming we adopt a permanent assistance program, if we don't have one in place for the first, at least, couple of months of the year, then we have a potential fairness issue after that if we change the 50%. So I'm wondering if we just raise the rates. The question I'm mulling about in my head is just raise the rates and then, and wait until we have an assistance program. I'm concerned about selling plots at 50%, and then we change that after two months, and maybe it's not the same discount.
Councilmember Ray, and then Councilmember Wintersheim.
I'm very much aligned with where Councilmember Goodman is. I don't know that having a temporary, unreviewed program in place for two months makes a lot of sense. We could come back with a higher discount, and then would we want to retroactively get the three people who signed up for the, picking a number out of the air, I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to be a large number of people who would be involved in that two month period of the pilot discount. And I don't feel like we're, we have the pressure on us to make that decision right now and then have to back away from it. I don't understand why we just can't say, bring back a discount program to us for review and approval on the, by no later than the 28th of February, and let's take the time to do it once, and let's take the time to do it right, and then we don't have the issues around fairness that you raised, which I think we're spot on.
Councilmember Wintersheim, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. The motion says 50%, so I was assuming that the consideration by the Director in consultation with the Cemetery Board would be the eligibility, and that's it.
That's correct.
We would be setting by legislation what the discount rate would be. And my sense from this too, because you don't have an eligibility criteria, well, nobody would be eligible until one was adopted. So I don't see how you, right? I mean, how could, I mean, we're saying 50% as of January 1, but without any eligibility criteria, okay, then we'll come forward with criteria in the future, and then we, then people could be eligible. That sounds to me like, you know, delaying an implementation until we have eligibility criteria. I could clarify, the motion as it's written right now, again, in trying to honor council's wishes of having something in place January 1, is asking for your approval for us to establish those eligibility criteria with the Cemetery Board. They have a December meeting, happens to be after the December 2 council meeting, so this would be seeking the ability to have something in place January 1. Okay, thank you for that clarification. And so it's, and the criteria from this legislation would be, it's going to be 50%. And the key other variable would be, what would be the eligibility criteria? Okay, thank you.
I am wondering if the two council members who haven't had a chance to comment would like to weigh in. Deputy Council President Baptiste, oh, sorry, Hunt next, and then Deputy Council President Baptiste, and then Councilmember Walsh, I didn't have you. You were commenting before the motion was made, I'd like to give you an opportunity to comment after. So Hunt first.
I think anyway, we have, if we don't have our discount program aligned with our rate increase, there's potentially a fairness issue, no matter what, as I see it. Because additionally, if we delay having any implementation of the discount rate, then there may be some individuals that are eligible for the discount rate, but because they fall within that window when we've increased rates but not yet implemented a discount program, they will be not able to receive the discount, whereas if they were, if they were a few months later applying for the discount program, then they would be eligible. So I think no matter what, as long as they aren't aligned, there's going to be a potential fairness issue, which is, I think, what we're all grappling with in how to make that work. So I wondered if it's possible to do the rate increase in February at the same time that we do the implementation of the increase of the, at the same time as the discount program.
No options without trade-offs. So in that case, the trade-off here is we are really at a critical point of needing to open up that second section of the upper cemetery. And so, given the long-term financial goal we're trying to achieve and getting that Cemetery Fund in a healthy place, we do not want to open up that second section of Upper Hillside until the fees are approved. It would mean delaying that opening and availability.
Deputy Council President Baptiste, followed by Councilmember Walsh.
So I just wanted to start with a question about whether there would be the potential to go forward with the 50% coming January 1, and with the understanding that the eligibility requirements were still to be determined, and if people were to come forward as of January 1, and they were interested in the discount program, that they could be told that the eligibility requirements would be coming forward, and if they were to meet those eligibility requirements, then they could retroactively go back to the 1st of the year and receive the discount if they became, if they were eligible.
I think a point of clarification is that the request is that the Cemetery Board set those eligibility requirements in December, and that's what the pilot pursuits with. So there isn't a second council touch on the eligibility rates.
So we would have both, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. We'd have both the eligibility and the 50% discount. It would go forward as the pilot program January 1.
Councilmember, well, Councilmember Baptiste, that was a question. Do you have a comment that you want to provide, for all council members?
Well, I'm trying to, the hard part for me is that, first of all, I wanted to start by thanking Council President Martz for bringing this forward and talking about the discount program. I think that this is incredibly important, and I understand everything that we're trying to accomplish with the cemetery and looking at, looking long-term at what we need to do strategically. But I think the discount program is incredibly important. As one of seven, it's hard for me to go forward with it without the discount program, so I'd really like to better understand maybe where we, what we could do to get the discount program as a part of the plan this evening.
I'm going to continue with Councilmember Walsh. I'm gonna continue with Councilmember Walsh. Oh, okay, awesome. Just to get your comments.
Just in general, I think that our rates, as they currently are for a full-size plot of $1,000, is the lowest of any of the cities that we were presented, and much lower than, obviously, non-city related. So, from my perspective, even going up to the 2,000 and the 2,500 is a relative discount compared to many of the other options that people have available. So, just other thoughts that are going through my head as far as the need to present a discount.
Thank you for that. I wanted to just generally check in with everybody. Our council rules generally follow Robert's rules. We've gone around, everybody's had a chance to comment. I still see hands going up in the air, which makes me think that there are folks who would like to follow up with a second round of comments. So, I saw Council President Martz' hand, Councilmember Winterstein's hand.
So...
And actually, may I make a little announcement beforehand? I'm not sure if this helps or not, but City Administrator pointed out that in checking the calendar for upcoming meetings at the beginning of January, that the January 6th City Council meeting could come with a proposal for the pilot program that has the discount rate and the eligibility requirements for adoption by council. It's only a six, it's six days off of starting at the beginning of the year, and then council would get that touch on the pilot program as well. So, just to add that to the, to the mix. Question on that?
May I clarify your clarification? Would that then be a pilot, or would that be the program?
Pilot.
Why wouldn't it be the program?
It could, it could be the program as well.
It could be the program. Oh, I misunderstood.
Because we'll have the recommendations from the Cemetery Board by the end of December.
Okay, not just on eligibility requirements, but overall.
The whole thing.
Okay, yeah. Thanks. Good question. The hands that I noticed going up were Councilmember Winterstein, Council President Martz, and then we'll proceed through to make sure everybody else gets an additional chance. Councilmember Winterstein.
My, this is lively, it's shifting. So, I was going to comment how, Jeff, thank you for your comments earlier, that it did clarify, I, I did misunderstand the proposal. I reread the, the motion, and I can, it's easy to misunderstand, but I got it. The program was going to be in place, but as originally proposed, January 1st, and we would find out later what the eligibility requirements are. But the, the rates and the discount rate that we would be establishing now, we'd find out later. So, it's always planned for January 1st. Having said that, if, if we want to make, if we want to amend in this part of it, I'll think about that language, and move that to the first business meeting in January, then I'll support that as well.
Thank you. Council President Martz.
So, I want to reiterate, or I want to agree with Councilmember Hunt saying, most of the options that we're hearing tonight have some element of what constitutes fair and what doesn't. If you pass away on December 31st versus January 1st versus February 28th versus March 1st, why, what rates should be. I would say that, help me understand, so, I wrote down what the, what, in the proposal, I wrote down several alternates that I heard, but the last one that I just heard was that, let me rephrase it and make, and see if I understand it correctly, that we would move forward with this bill, understanding that we would be seeing the program, the proposed low-income program on January 6th, and that rates would also go into effect after that January 6th. So, let's say January 7th, that rates would go into effect January 7th at the same time as a low-income program. So, the two, the rate change and the low-income program would go into effect at the same time, and council would make a decision at the January 6th council meeting. Is that what is, is the administration saying that's possible?
Either one is possible. Amending, amending the motion tonight and approving fees effective January 1st, and having the assistance program January 6th, or I suppose, yeah, bringing this Agenda Bill back in its entirety and adopting both the fees and the assistance program, that same night is an option to consider as well.
So, I, I would be happy to propose that amendment, but I don't have the specific language yet for it.
I can ask a parliamentarian question. Do we need to take a break to provide some modified wording, or are you comfortable that the council, someone on the council will be able to propose a few changes to these two points, medias, to make it work?
It depends on what your intent is. If your intent is to simply postpone this matter to the January 6th meeting, the entire action, then I think it's appropriate to simply make a motion to postpone to January 6th. That's a subsidiary motion to the motion that's on the table. It just postpones the matter until, until January 6th, and the whole matter would come back. If you want to do the other option of making things effective January 1, making the rates effective January 1, and the, and the discount program come back January 6th, then that's a little bit different, and you need to amend the current motion in order to do that.
I just have one administrative clarification, if I can. There is additional ordinances this evening, and a Council President letter, direction to the administration. Is there any impact that we're not seeing to the follow-on budget conversations by deferring the vote on these rates till January 6th?
The budget assumes the revenues from the rate increase, but I think if we were just to wait till January 6th, that there would not be a material impact to warrant a change.
That's great. Great. Council President Martz.
Madam Mayor, I propose we postpone this Agenda Bill discussion until the January 6th, 2020, regular council meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Goodman wants a second. Discussion? Deputy Council President Baptiste.
Just because I won't be here on January 6th, I just wanted to say, I very much appreciate having the discount program, and just want to say to my fellow councilmembers how incredibly important I think this is. I've seen across friends and family this kind of issue be crippling at one of the most horrible times for people, and, and I do believe that this is something that, that is important for us to offer and think about, and the discount program is incredibly important. So, just wanted to give that final word.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
In that same vein, Barb, I do support this as well.
Any other comments before a call for the vote? Councilmember Goodman.
I just wanted to comment about the 50% discount, and, and hope that the Cemetery Board can discuss the, the program, thinking about it comprehensively, and looking at rates elsewhere, so that we, I don't know how I say it, I mean, I support a discount program, but I also am mindful of what we charge compared to other areas.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any. All those in favor to postpone the Agenda Bill until the January 6th, 2020 council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item, item J, is AB 7758, Proposed 2020 Budget Including Salary Ordinances. The request is to adopt the proposed ordinance, and the presentation has previously been provided under public hearing. However, we can still, we have Director Goldberg available for any additional questions that you may have. Are there any questions for Director Goldberg? Would somebody care to make a motion? Council President Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I...
Oops, there you go.
Sorry.
How about that?
Okay. I move to adopt ordinance number...
2886.
Adopting a revised 2020 salar, salaries? Am I getting the pronoun right?
Adopting a revised 2020...
Sorry. Revised 2020 salary schedule for all city employees, and amending the salary schedules previously adopted, and amended by ordinance numbers 2819, 2828, 2829, 2835, and 2853, and adopt ordinance number...
I'm sorry, I'd like to make a correction. The first ordinance was number 2887, and the second ordinance now is ordinance number 2888.
Adopting the 2020 budget, setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations for each separate fund, and, and estimated impact on ending fund balances for all such funds combined of the city for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2020.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, and I apologize that Council President Martz had to try and read under my scribbly notes. Makes it a little harder to see the words when somebody writes over top of them. Okay, council discussion. Also, Member Goodman.
So, I'm going to support this, and I, again, want to say that I, I really appreciate the, the team that worked on this, particularly the Finance Department. I think that in my time doing this, not only as a council member, but going all the way back to, I think, probably my first coverage of city council meetings in either 1996 or 1997, in my personal opinion, this was the best-presented proposed budget that I've ever seen, and the responses to the questions that the council asked, and to the issues presented was the most thorough. And, again, my opinion, comprehensive, and, my opinion, seemingly the most accurate and in-depth, and, like I said before during our sessions, our budget deliberations, that there were many rocks that were unturned, turned over, many things that were stated to us that I appreciated, all of the candor. And while I understand that this was billed to be a very difficult budget year with a potential $5.2 million shortfall for next year, I think that the way that this was presented, and for all the reasons that I just mentioned, even though there were some tough decisions to, for us to make, in my opinion, and my perspective is that the work that you all did made that much easier for us. There are, of course, differences of opinion about how you close gaps, and there was a proposed budgetment, budget from the administration, and there are several people, seven people sitting up here, and then there's also, the community members also have their opinions. But I think that it was an incredibly thoughtful process, and I really appreciate that. We also received some emails from some community members who took an incredible amount of time going through the budget and sending us emails, and I really, really, really appreciate it. That, you know, that's a lot of time to go through a budget and send us comments on, on what they think that we should do with the budget. So, I, I do support the budget and this, this budget that we have landed on. I do think that we have even more significant, important, and difficult work to do next year, as we figure out how we're going to deal with the information that we now know that we need to deal with. So, for those reasons, I'll support it, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional comments? Council President Martz.
I really want to plus-one what Councilmember Goodman said. This has been, going into it, one of the most challenging budgets that we've had in my ten years on council, but owing to superb presentation and support from city staff and thoughtful deliberation on the part of council, we have, we have arrived at a solution. I also, however, want to re, plus-one Councilmember's good comment, Councilmember Goodman's comments, that we have some big challenges in front of us next year. And I will miss Council Deputy President Baptiste and Councilmember Winterstein's contributions next year, because, you know, the city services assessment, which we still are, are going to figure out even the scope on that, is going to be critical. We are dipping into ending fund balance a little bit in a way that we can't do over the long haul if we adopt this budget this evening. So, we know that we have to make some challenging structural changes next year, but this is, to me, the right way to balance things while still keeping the door open to understanding that, what the budgetary environment next year may look different. Hopefully, it'll look different in a better way, but if it looks different in a worse way, this city services assessment is going to become one of the most critical things that we accomplish next year. Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilmember Winterstein, and then Deputy Council President Baptiste.
Okay, thank you. Beth, I want to echo the same comments. It was a lot of discussion about substance and no distractions about form, which have hindered us a little bit in the past, so I do, I do appreciate that, and do echo the, my appreciation for the quality and the professionalism, and the completeness and the timeliness of the work. I appreciate that very much. And, and since, one of the things I believe as a council member is to be as, and I think the people who put us here and vote for us in office have a right to expect that we are kind of as transparent as possible. We explain our thinking, whether we're for or against any particular action, and this, everybody knows, because we were all in these meetings together, you know, I was kind of, I've been swimming upstream against the majority of my council members, and I want to say that I'm a big fan of this representative democracy, this format we have. I accept the rules, and that's, that's, that is, that's fine. Sometimes you're in the majority, and sometimes that you're not. And so, you know, with having that, having said that, as I mentioned earlier, there are elements of this budget that I don't support, and I wish we were doing them different. And, and I want to take a moment to be in that spirit of being transparent, to help make sure everybody understands. I think it's preordained what direction this is going, based upon other work that we've already done, but, but kind of for the record, I do want, I did want to give everybody a chance to better understand where I was coming from. So, to help that, I have, I have put something together to help me, you know, with my comments, and I've, and they're being projected on the screen right now. You know, one of the things that got my attention right away, and this is just, goes back from 2017, it's got 18 unaudited numbers forecasted for 2019, and what's in the budget proposal. Now, I would say that budget proposal, some of those numbers have been moving a little bit. It's been hard to track them throughout. But what got my attention when I looked at this is that, a few years ago, this category of other actually was our, our greatest source. Sales tax was trending up, and then in 18, and in 19, we saw significant decreases in other, and now it's flat there. So, I want to, that got my attention. Something is definitely changing. And so, just a really quick, as I went through each of these, I mean, we know about sales tax, provided information to us in August, it has been trending down since 2017, this plan is to be flat overall from 2020, from 2019 to 2020. A couple of things about property tax, we've already talked about these. We are going to be drawing down our bank capacity, which has been past taxes not collected, which at that time was deemed as not needed by those councils when we didn't, when we didn't take that full 1%. And even the number we got tonight, that the impact is an average of $12 for homes at the average assessed value within, within Issaquah. So, this is, this, using that bank capacity adds $12 to the bill. Couple of other numbers, too, that were important, I thought, to, just to share. I have been tracking the property tax quite closely over the years, and what's unique about this one, in all the years I've been tracking it, it is a time when the actual percentage growth of my bill, for my tax bill, will be actually higher than the percentage growth of my assessed value of my house. So, that's that, that, in the bottom left, the blue bars represent the increased percentage of assessed value, and the red bars represent the increase, or the percentage change of my own tax bill. So, this is one year where the tax bill's going up greater than the, for the, for the city than the actual assessed value. And then some of the patterns that are in here, and we've seen some of this, there certainly are some things changing, and this is just data we've, we've been getting all along, I just aggregated... I just aggregated it here in the bottom right, that if you do the math, too, since kind of property tax from new construction is off by 38% since 2017. So it's clearly, there's something going on when it comes to, at least, that number tells us something, and I don't know a lot, or I can't tell you exactly what that means, but that's a trend, and I think that's worth noting. Couple of things about utility tax, which is one of our revenue sources as well. It is the overall lowest kind of percentage. It represents less than 10%. It has been trending down slightly. We all know that, that's been reported to us. I do think some of that trending, as was reported to us as well in those sources, some of that is due to consumer choice and choices that they've made, but it was a small amount. What's interesting to me, the tax on utility that we are proposing for water, sewer, and stormwater, you know, those really aren't discretionary services. People, if they have a house, they need water. They can maybe challenge, they can maybe adjust how much they have, but our sewer and stormwater prices are somewhat fixed. And a point I made earlier, too, I just realized it this evening, that fourth bullet, that amount that we collect, and that's a screenshot, that's a capture from the bill that I get, where the sewer service for residential from Metro is $90.66 a month, and the sewer service for the city is $32.30. So we are taxing the sum of those, so the $90 is part, is going to have a 3% tax assessed to it as well. And I was kind of curious on how many would be affected by this, and we have 8,620 water customers. So this is just telling me more of the story. Now, back to that other revenue category, and these are numbers that are right from the budget documents as well. They've moved around a little bit in the 2020 numbers, but I think the picture hasn't really changed. That I look at a chart like this, and obviously, that top blue line has been the one that's been moving the most. It's come down dramatically. That's from planning permits and licensing. And it's actuals for 2017, actuals for 2018 unaudited. It's the forecast adjusted for 2019, and in this particular category, planning permits and licensing, it's quite a bit less than the original budget. But we're currently forecasting that number of 5.5 million. And then, and then in, for 2020, and I think I heard tonight, maybe this number is a little bit higher than what I have there, but there's a 2 point, by these numbers, there's a, this area alone, this one area, is down by 2.3 million in forecasted revenue since 2019. And in one of the budget, one of the questions that was asked, and there's a reply, and I got the reference to the document in here, Budget Questions and Responses Content 101819, there's a couple of places where it was answered, but I picked out, I thought, the one comment that was more or less repeated, that this was largely due to a large, a number of large one-time outlier projects, i.e. Costco, in 2019, that are not expected to continue in 2020. So a very dramatic lowering of forecasted revenue at 2.4 million just from this one source. And I was, I did ask as well, overall, and I got this information from staff, and I think that was forwarded to everybody on the council, that we have roughly, there's roughly, I think, and this, these might be 2018 numbers or 19, I'm not sure about that. We had roughly 2,000 permit holders, and we conducted around 7,500 inspections. So you get an idea on how, the numbers of people and entities that we are working with. So when I, you know, put that all together, you know, I, this is, this is what I was thinking about, that we look at the property tax use of bank capacity, that increases the average, household average of $12. That was the number that was reported this evening. The utility taxes, the number that's in the bill is for one month, in tonight's agenda bills, for one bi-monthly bill, it's $14 and change. So that's that, we get six of those a year, so that's a total of $89. So the total new taxes between bank capacity and higher utility taxes is just, is $101 per average, per household. So I thought about that. Okay, you know, that's a primary source of the new revenue that we have. As I showed you earlier, hands down, the biggest drop came from planning permits and licenses. And I've, you know, this is not a one-to-one comparison, but I do think about how, you know, what we're doing here is we are going and tapping into property owners to make up a big portion of the loss, not all of it, or the decrease. And what was really important to me, it was really one big provider, but, you know, the overall numbers were roughly 2,000 permit holders. And again, that water customer number is about 8,600. So I definitely looked at it that way and saw that, yeah, that planning permitting and licensing is kind of volatile, certainly. The use of water isn't going to be very volatile, and I understand needing to kind of restructure a budget to be perhaps less prone to volatility. And but, and I am all in favor of that type of, you know, kind of fiscal policy and goals that we have as a city. But these numbers really spoke to me. And one other thing, and this is just a, before I get to my summary, I just wanted to, did kind of the overall summary of deliberations, is that the administration did propose a balanced budget that did not use any ending fund balance. If you add up all the council's actions, the changes that we took, there was a net decrease in revenue. The big thing that we did as council, we took the proposed 6%, took it down to 3%. That was the largest decrease in revenue. We had a net increase in expenses, the council did, so those were, we restored the community funds, both for the contract services, for the grants for capacity building. We also, there was one decrease, which was not to study the City Hall option, but the net was there. So what we did as a council, we actually increased the gap between revenues and expenses by over $1.2 million. That's what we did in our deliberations. And all these numbers have been validated, and they tie out to everything that's in Councilmember Martz's letter. Now, it was interesting, kudos to the administration, did react to that, and they did come forward with a net increase in revenue. Now, some of that, that was updated information about property tax, so we didn't really do anything, that was just updated from the county assessors. We did use funds from other, there was the E911, $100,000. There is the, there's a couple other funds, but all we did, we didn't really reduce, we basically brought some more money in from these other funds, so that was the use of other funds. And there was some really small net new revenue based upon both, I think, the swimming hours and that charging court users for the merchant fee is a small number as well. So those, so the administration's reaction was, we got a little bit more revenue from these different sources. The net, and then there's a total net decrease in expense via true cuts, right? There was the 1% of personnel costs, and there was also a small little training for HR, there may have been some other. Those were some real cuts that the administration offered. But then the $432,000 were other decreases in expenses that really were for updates. The one key update was, we got an adjustment to our number for EFER, so that was really, the number, bill was really $77,000 less, so that was an update. But then all the other kind of corrections were, that one time, $200,000 for double spending IT expenses for DSD, and then for, that was for 2019, a 2020 number of $150,000 was there, and there were others as well, which really were just kind of corrections. And so the administration's reaction to the council's increase in the gap was to decrease it by that roughly $1 million, and hence, that's how we get to now, which was a use zero, now is using $196,000 in ending fund balance. I know this is a pretty interesting kind of summary, because, well, these are the numbers. They, they don't lie, they are what they are. And then, you know, if I could have had it my way, we wouldn't have raised the taxes, we would have reduced spending even more, and we would have used, we would have temporarily used fund balance, because this is very doable, we could have done it without violating any policy. So I've done a screen captures of, out of our policy document, and you can see the URL right there where you can get it, that our range would be in the 50% to 20% of expenditures, as was reported tonight and is in our material. Even with these adjustments, this budget leaves us a ratio of 27%. So we're well above the policy there. And then the other one, in section 2.3 down there, is, there's three bullets in that section, and it talks about our key policy. And one, one I'm really glad to hear, because I think there's a couple of us sitting at the dais this evening, where over the years, we really, because the last update was made in 2017 to the financial management policies, we really did hammer in that we wanted to make sure ongoing revenues covered ongoing expenses. And I heard that echoed from many of my colleagues up there as a priority, and I, and I, that is, that's good policy. But there's another bullet in there as well, which says, provide temporary resources, in other words, you can use the balance or cash on hand, to provide temporary resources in the event of an economic downturn. And that's, I think, what we're seeing. There's a shift, you know, we know the sales tax is, from 18 is down to 19, we're calling it flat through, through 2020. You know, there was portrayed as, there's, there's an economic change, and we need to, we need to do something about it. But I think we envisioned this. When we updated the policies in 2017, we envisioned something like this as possible. And just for your, for your benefit, I did a calculation, you know, at 27%, we had an extra $3.5 million to work with. Not saying we should have used all of that, but, but I think to balance the budget, do some additional cuts, and temporarily use those funds, that's what I would have liked to seen. In other words, without raising any of the utility taxes. Now, early this evening, I think what we did with parks was right, and, and so it wasn't across the board, it was definitely on a case-by-case basis. And I'd also mentioned about the property. And so this is kind of, this is my last, my last slide, is I'm not going to be here in the future, and I would ask the future council to commit to reviewing utility taxes next year, because if our traditional sources of revenue recover, then I would ask to consider, just reset it to their pre-2020 levels. You know, that, it's, it's that sense of, is this temporary? And just like our policies envision, it might be temporary, so use your cash on hand to float it through. That's what we were envisioning when we wrote that policy, and this was our year to do that. And so let's say it is temporary, and we get some numbers, and we, and we're looking forward a year from now, and there's been a good recovery. Well, okay, I would ask my colleagues to consider resetting those rates. And last, last bit, you're going to do an assessment of city services, and I have no, you know, full disclosure, I have no stake in any of this, I've just gotten to know this one service provider, but you're going to do that assessment of city services, I would really encourage every, the administration, I did already mention this to Mayor Polly, and she was aware of this, that my suggestion to make sure we, we solicited multiple experts, including the Pomegranate Center. If you look at their, what they do, I've gotten, I've read about them a little bit, and I think that their approach is exactly what this community should experience when we do this assessment of city services. So that's it. Thank you for, for listening. I just, it should be really clear about why I'm going to be opposing this and for these reasons, but I respect the process. I'm one of seven, and I'm, and I'm as proud of my city as I has ever been. Thank you.
Deputy Council President Bateese?
So I just, this budget session brought us many tough decisions, and sometimes you go down the road, and some of those decisions you face, and some of those choices you have, you have a couple that aren't so great, and that, and that was really, it was tough to go through and did not take any of, any of that lightly, and had lots of nights of just sitting and thinking about different pathways that we could go down. But I really wanted to thank all of the community members that wrote and talked to all of us as we were going through deliberations. That's so incredibly important. Beth and the whole finance team, and the, such a great job presenting the budget and having gone through different iterations. It was just really well done and so easy to follow and understand, and this was an incredibly tough year, lots of different changes and new people coming in, and being able to get through it in that way is fantastic. And I just wanted to thank all of you, wanted to thank the administration, and the mayor, and all of my fellow council members. And this is my last budget that I'll go through, and I, it's just been an honor to work with such a passionate, committed team, and I feel so confident and happy as I go forward knowing the mayor, the administration, and this council will, will lead us through. There'll be a lot of, there'll be a lot more tough decisions, but I have such great confidence and faith.
We are still in round one of comments, and I'm checking to see if Councilmember Hunt, Ray, or Walsh would also like to participate. I'm getting a no from Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Hunt?
I think, I think it is important to explain why I would support this, and so my comments are to that effect. I do support the budget, and I think that we are in a better place to have more conversations about how to balance our revenue and expenditure in the coming year. I think we, we are better positioned to be thinking about that because of the transparency and how the budget was, was shown to us this year, and the amount of questions that we received answers back on. And so I do really appreciate the thoroughness of the budget this year, and I think it prepares us better for the future conversations that we'll have. I also wanted to echo Councilmember Goodman's thanks to the individuals in the community that gave us feedback on the budget, and both in email and then in comments. And that feedback is always very welcome, because we have our, we have our conversations, but sometimes the community sees things in the budget that we don't see, or it has a different perspective. So that input is always very welcome and very much appreciated. And the last thing is, I do support the way that we're balancing this budget, because I think that we needed to make longer-term, forward-looking changes in how we're in revenues versus expenditures. And I think we can continue to make those adjustments with the services assessment to make sure that we're providing the value that the community expects for the revenues that we're collecting, and that should be an ongoing process of assessing that value we're providing and the services we're providing against the revenue we're collecting. But I also see that we needed to look at how, look at the way we've been balancing the budget in the past, and then look at our current forecast and make an adjustment. So I see this budget as one step in that direction. I'll be supporting it.
And Councilmember Walsh, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, and I'm so glad I went after Councilmember Hunt, because I get to just say plus one to everything she just said.
So that has been comments from all council members. I'm just checking back in before we move to a vote to see if anybody wants to provide an additional round of comments. Otherwise, we are ready to move to the vote. I'm not seeing any. All those in favor of adopting, oh, bad Mary Lou. I did not write down the ordinance numbers.
2887 and 2888.
Thank you. All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2887, adopting a revised 2020 salary schedule for all city employees and amending the salary schedules previously adopted and amended by ordinance numbers 2819, 2828, 2829, 2835, and 2853, and adopting ordinance number 2880, adopting a 2020 budget, setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations for each separate fund, and estimated impact on the ending fund balances for all such funds combined of the city for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2020, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, six to one. I actually, it's maybe a little bit unusual, but I feel like I would like to express the administration's gratitude for all your hard work this year. This was a difficult year. It was apparent to me, watching the deliberations and watching your study sessions, that council was proposing some themes, and if the public didn't pick up on them, I thought I might say what a few of them were. You wanted to maintain services. You wanted to minimize any increases so that you would be moderating impacts to ratepayers and taxpayers. You really strove to address affordability issues, which is something that has risen way up in our citizens' survey of concerns, and so I want to thank you for that. And you made it clear that you want us to measure success for new affordability initiatives by telling you how many folks could qualify, but also how many are using them. You're, you're looking to make sure that what you're proposing and what you're approving is making a difference in people's lives. is making a difference in people's lives. That came across in so many of your conversations. And that also that we're a work in progress, and we're going to undertake a review of city services like we've never done before. So if the community didn't pick up on that, I thought you did amazing work this year. And so I just want to thank you on behalf of the administration. The next item under, on our agenda this evening is Good of the Order. And council member Hunt, I believe you had an item you would like to share.
I did. So I wanted to take a moment, because I will be switching to a different seat on council. So that means this will be my last meeting, working as a council member with council deputy president Bateese and council member Winterstein. So I just wanted to take this moment to publicly say how much I have appreciated working with both of you and how much, and to thank you so much for the hard work that you've done on behalf of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have an odd issue this election, where we have a seated council member who's going to leave us for six weeks and come back on January 1st. So we will be welcoming you back when you come. Also, under Good of the Order, I wanted to remind council members that there was an invitation that went out to celebrate some of our amazing volunteers, Thursday night, November 21st, our board and commission members. We have done thank yous in many different ways, and we're trying something again, different this year, and I hope you'll be able to make it. Does anybody else have any items for Good of the Order? Deputy Council President Bateese, followed by council member Walsh.
So I, I will get a chance to speak later in the year, but since I won't get to speak to council member Hunt, I just wanted to tell you how much I've appreciated working with you. And I have a feeling you'll be in the audience when I'm speaking later, but just wanted to get a chance to say that to you as well.
Thank you. Council member Walsh?
So I wanted to take a moment to thank the Open Window School second grade, who not only were fantastic hosts, but have sent us so very many thank you notes. And I have created some, I sorted them with the ones that are the most legible, and I'm going to pass them around so that everybody can enjoy during Good of the Order.
Thank you for doing that. Any other for Good of the Order? I'm going to move on and talk about a few upcoming meetings. On November 26th, there'll be a special council meeting at 6:30. It'll be an executive session, followed by a city council study session at 7:00 p.m. And the potential agenda items for the study session are the Healthy Community Strategy and the Title 18 update. On December 2nd, there'll be a regular council meeting at 7:00 p.m., and the potential agenda items are tree canopy, this will be an informational update, appeal hearing for the State Environmental Policy Act, appeal of the 2019 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Amendments, it's a quasi-judicial item, inter-local agreement with the Department of Ecology, this is in reference to the PFAS groundwater modeling, an inter-local agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue, which relates to the PFAS study partnership that we have, and potentially amending IMC Chapter 13.24, utility rates and charges. So at this point in time, 10:35, everybody bright-eyed and bushy-tailed will be heading into executive session. Your night is not over yet. So as earlier announced, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation for RCW 42.3.110 per N1 per NI. This item is expected to last, I'm going to go with 10 minutes, recognizing that we can add on. No action is anticipated to follow an open session, and we will now recess into executive session at 10:35.